Finding the zoning commission. December fifth, twenty twenty three, and we have four presence. We do have a quorum. Um, we have Commissioner Hatch and Commissioner Quinney that have been excused. So we will go ahead and get started with the pre-meeting. First thing on the meeting is review of the agenda which we've got in front of us and next is um consent on the minutes from last meeting, which was a book in itself. Any questions or? Okay.
Um, I just wanna say that. Always in the wrong one. Uh, I thought the minutes were well written. Just wanna say that. I don't know how you do it, but you did a great job.
Yeah, I went through them and I was thinking, holy moly, she got most everything that I could remember, so. That's why we have them. Um, okay, next. Public hearing with final action by the planning commission for Highland South Lot Three. Um, and it looks like Taylor.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you'll actually notice this is almost the exact same item that was pulled from your agenda last time. Uh, after rethinking it, they actually said they wanted to come forward with this, so there was almost no changes from what was in your packet last time.
We didn't get anything in our packet last time, so.
Oh, well. That's a joke then. That's completely different. Um, this is a three lot, sorry, three pad. We'll try to get a three tenant pad site located at the intersection of seventy eight hundred south and fifty six hundred west. Um, it's at the very corner that the uh, the northeast corner there. It's adjacent to the Lot Five, which was approved the last time. Um, uh, just at that pad site for Home Depot, um. Kind of the same thing. We're looking for a conditional use permit for the drive-through and then a site plan for the building. Um, have any questions you might have?
Does anybody have any questions?
I was just curious why they pulled it.
Uh, they're still in negotiations with some of the tenants and the tenant that was driving it thought they wanted some changes and so they had to pull to make sure it would work with the tenant and then further evaluation it did, so.
Okay. And Chair Allen is here now, so. Next on the agenda is the Wood Ranch Bistro and it looks like Ray.
Yeah, Ray's mother had to go in for surgery and so I'm taking his place tonight, so. Uh, the Wood Ranch Bistro is just um, either directly east or west of the community center that the planning commission approved. I believe last meeting or the meeting before, maybe that was, maybe you haven't approved, maybe it's on the DRC. Um, but it's at the end of the model home row that I think you've been looking at with the uh, sub area plan, so the bistro will be um, an area, kind of a sales area for Wood Ranch as well as um, eventually it will turn into just kind of a small commercial space for the Wood Ranch residents. So the architecture of it will be similar to the community center and well, that's the theme of the Wood Ranch development staff recommending approval of uh, the bistro. Do you have any other questions for me?
I just wanted to mention, I noticed that there was a condition of approval for either a fence or seating on top of the building.
Yeah.
But I think they wanna, they'll probably just put a fence up there, but I just appreciate your work on that, cuz it was a concern for me.
And I think uh, Gary Lang, well, I know Gary Lang still will be here, who's a representative of Wood Ranch. If you wanna confirm that with him when he comes.
I remember that was one of the concerns they had before, when it became to us before. Isn't that the one that actually kind of faces almost the straight level of the?
Exactly.
Yeah.
There's a trail right above it, yeah.
Yeah, I I do remember that. Yeah.
All right, we're jumping in here. Jordan River Heights. Uh, also Larry?
That's me again, and so Jordan River Heights is on ninety two seventy, or one access is on ninety two seventy south. Uh, Temple Driver thirteen hundred west, and it will have another access going into Brigadoon Development. Uh, I think your planning commissioner prior members from the zone change a few months ago. It's a twenty nine lot uh, subdivision on nine acres. It's R one eight zone. It's standard, standard subdivision. Um, you know, I think, and at the very west end, there will be a pedestrian access um, from the Stub Street to the subdivision to the north, so there'll be a full vehicular access to the subdivision to the south and just a pedestrian access to the one to the north because of the house that was built there years ago. There's not room enough to uh, put a full vehicular access. The staff's recommending approval of this. And I actually think they've, they've trimmed it down by four or five lots since the zone changed concept plan, so. Good. Do you have any questions uh, for me?
Questions for staff? All right. Hopefully that means a good discussion during the meeting. Uh, Copper Meadows, Taylor.
Thank you. Um, Chair, this is uh, located on the very west edge of the city. Uh, eighty two hundred south and uh, Stokesley Drive. It's just south of the Sycamores Development, north of the future Jones Ranch master plan. Um, this is three applications we're looking at tonight. The first is a, a general plan, future land use map amendment. Uh, the property currently has low density, very low density, public facilities and park on the property. They wanna change all of that to low density residential. They're then proposing a rezone to the PC zone with a maximum density of four point nine units breaker. Um, but one of the functions of our PC zone is you have to approve a master development agreement prior to approving the rezone, so that will be coming before that and the motions that we're making tonight. Um, cuz master development agreement, it touches on some of the unique concepts that they wanna do, like some cluster cottage lots, um, and kind of the way they wanna mix units. Some of the open space areas which they wanna show. Um, so those are all things to consider tonight. Staff is recommending denial of all three of the applications and really, once you recommend denial of the one, you have to kind of recommend denial of the other two. Um, but with that, happy to see questions you might have.
Commissioner Shelton?
Um, can you speak to the uh, PC zone in relation to the two hundred acre requirement and?
And that? Yeah, so the PC zone, um, the city council can approve PC zoning under two hundred acres, but if we look at this in context, the property directly north of it, over five hundred acres is owned, PC directly south of it, another about tw- seven hundred acres is own PC, so overall it's adjacent to over fourteen hundred acres of PC zoning. So a- as staff, we feel like it's appropriate because it's seventy six acres surrounded by almost fifteen hundred acres of PC zoning, so even though it's under that two hundred acres for this parcel, the whole context of the area, it makes sense.
So as planning commissioners, are we allowed to look at all of the property around it or just the seventy six acres?
Yeah, I think you're able to. This is a legislative decision, so you can look at all of that and you can make a recommendation to the council. They'll ultimately have the final decision. So if you feel like it's appropriate, you can recommend that it's appropriate to the council. If you uh, feel like it's not appropriate, the PC zone, you're also welcome to make that recommendation to the council.
Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, um. Taylor. Um, I don't know if I'm the only one that's has bad hearing maybe, but I just need you to speak up just a little bit more when you talk, okay? I'm sorry.
No, I think uh, I'll, I'll do better. Try to make sure I'm speaking into the microphone.
Okay, because you know, I'm, I'm new to it. I'm trying to understand everything that you're saying.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, two text amendments. I don't see Alan. Yes, Alan is here. Are you gonna give us a, just a briefing on the water efficient standards?
We, we turned off the airplane one. Thank you, Commissioners, uh, yeah. Um, so back in twenty twenty one, the planning commission and the city council adopted water efficiency standards from Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. Um, the, just this year, I believe it was uh, twenty, early twenty twenty three, um, the division of uh, division of water resources with the state of Utah conducted an audit of city ordinances and found that we were not in compliance with a couple things. So what should be in your packet is a, some text amendments. Uh, one of the things that is in there is that multi-family housing has to follow the same requirements as commercial and industrial and single-family housing for new construction only is not retroactive. But um, you can have the greater of either two hundred and fifty square foot, square feet of turf on front and side yards or thirty five percent of the total landscape area of front and side yard. So if you have a your total landscape area front and side yards is um, two thousand square feet, then seven hundred square feet can be turf. And it's an effort to be water-wise, water e- efficient, um, and we need to adopt these in order to be compliant with the state of Utah guidance on water efficiency standards and also with Jordan Valley Water. Any questions?
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
And Larry, home occupation standards?
Yeah, and so we've been getting a few requests about uh, people operating home occupations outside, well, let me back up and say that in West Jordan City uh, to conduct a home occupation has to be conducted entirely within the primary resident. And we've had a few requests uh, for people wanting to uh, conduct home occupations in garages or accessory structures on the property, but not within the, the uh, primary dwelling. Um, you know, and as you, you read in your staff report, the home occupation uh, standard was adopted in, what, twenty two years ago in West Jordan. It's, it's not uncommon. There's still some cities that are uh, administering home occupations the same way that West Jordan does, that they have to be in a limited area within the primary residence. But there are several cities that allow people to do things in garages or accessory buildings um, on the same property. You know, the, the the thing that I wanna make clear to the planning commission is none of the uses have changed. So you know, it's not saying that someone can use a garage now for an auto body paint shop because that's not allowed as a home occupation, but they could do it. Um, there's one person that wants to uh, style hair in an accessory building, and the reason they wanna do that is to is because their, their child has a autoimmune disease and that's what um, she does for a living and so, um, you know, and that's to prevent people from coming into her home, but she still wants to conduct a home occupation. There's other people that have wanted to run accounting offices and things of that nature in garages and accessory buildings, and I'll go through the standards, but what it really does is limit it uh, to no more than five hundred square feet, and you say, well, that's, that could be a pretty big outshed, but you know, it's still the same limitation that is in the home, and so the, the primary thing we should be looking at is that it does change the residential character of the area, but you know, with properties being so expensive and people working from home more now than ever, um, you know, it may be a good time to have a, a discussion in a public process about whether it's appropriate to change the rules for home occupations. So do you have any questions for me?
Commissioner Thomas?
I have one that's not for the actual dwelling, but for home occupations and they're doing it outside of the actual residence or garage, what is the city ordinance on that? Cuz I couldn't find it.
Right now?
Yeah.
There, you can't do it. It's prohibited.
Okay.
And that's the reason we're changing the, the ordinance, so.
But I mean, with this change, that would allow that if they're on the outside.
You're allowed in a garage or an accessory building.
No, but I'm not talking yet, the garage or structure. I'm talking at a outside.
No, it has to be inside a building. It can't be in someone's backyard.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson?
Um, this might be a stupid question, but I was wondering is, is it really enforceable? I mean, because it would require a check of going into someone's home.
Um, yes, because with their home occupation license, they're inspected by a building inspector and a member of the fire marshals team.
Okay, I'm hoping so.
Yeah.
So I, I have one question on that one, Larry, and that is, uh, I apologize. I was in the middle of reviewing the packet. My internet went out, so I didn't get to read the last two text messages.
It was, it was amazing writing.
I, I, it's, I'm sure it was just eclipsing everything. It's like watching the first two Lord of the Rings movies, not getting to the third. I, when it comes to the home occupation, does, did the text amendment discuss the parking availability?
Um, no, it do- that doesn't change because we already have that in our standard. What it does prohibit is if someone wants to use a garage for a home occupation, they cannot eliminate that required parking out of that garage.
Okay.
Okay, but it, but it, it does not require any additional parking for the home occupation. Now, if that's something the planning commission would like me to go back and look at, then we'll, we'll discuss that at at that time, if you have a concern about that.
I, I'm not entirely sure I do yet. It was, it came to mind, so thank you.
I think they cannot eliminate what parking is required in the garage for a home occupation. So we're not gonna substitute one thing for the other.
Makes sense. Uh, do we have training today?
No, but I have a couple of things what I wanna go over um, with the planning commission, if that's okay, Chair. So um, what we have been giving to the applicants, and these are just and I, I don't expect you to read any of this, but, and I'll provide hard copies probably at the next meeting, but I've asked the planners who are the project manager to give these to the applicants so that when they come to the dais, they're just not saying, well, I'd like you to approve my project and then go sit down. We want them to discuss a little more with the planning commission uh, what their project is. And what it does is it, it talks about the time that will be given, what the commission chair calls into and then to discuss the item, and then it goes through the criteria that's in the ordinance that uh, they need to discuss in length, why they, why it should be approved. And then at the very bottom, you see staff's responsibility is to have a presentation available and to answer any technical questions. It's not staff's job here to promote their project, but we are here to support it with technical and code questions. Um, and so we'll still probably pretty much do it the same way uh, for the next couple of meetings at least. We ask you to have a little patience until we try to retrain one person at a time to do this, and then these form applicant forms were for conditional use preliminary subdivision, preliminary site plan development, plan zoning amendment, and general land use map amendments. And so they're all, they're always sent to the applicant. Julie does that very efficiently when she sends in the staff reports, so they need, but well, we will coach the applicants in the future to start using these as they address you, because I think that it's I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that you wanna hear more from them, what they've been giving you in, in the past, okay? And then also, you may have noticed, particularly in my staff report. Um, staff, staff is going to do staff recommendation, a recommended motion, and then a recommended alternative motion in the staff reports. Now, all of them tonight might not have this in it, but in the, by the next meeting, they will. And as you can see, um, the staff recommendation for the zoning text amendment, for example, and this is right out of the ordinance, um, and so for a text amendment, you can approve it, you can approve it and modify it as a planning commission. You can approve in part, you can deny in part. Or you can deny it, or any combination of, and you know, but then that will always be in there, but say for instance, the home occupation text amendment will always reference, you know, based on the staff report and the evidence and explanation received at the public hearing that uh, we forward a rec- we've recommended that you forward a recommendation approval. Or if we're going to say denial, we'll say deny. Now, moving on, and so this is what the ordinance will actually, the motion recommended, and I I should say it's a recommended motion, and I would uh, it would probably be good if you just read this. I know it takes more time, but I think it's, you know, Mr. Murray may have uh, some more to say about that, but I think it's just really clear for the planning commission also. And so the motion will always say, based on the information and findings required set forth in the staff report and evidence and explanation received today, I'm aware that the planning commission afford a recommendation or approval to the city council for this application, finding that the affirmative determination has been made for the criteria found in thirteen seventy six B one through four, then that really mirrors the language in the ordinance. So if anything was ever to go to court, the judge would say, well, I guess the judge would say, I'm not sure, but he would say, well, it follows the ordinance completely, you know, hasn't? And then below that, in italics, it says the planning commission does not agree, then you can have an alternative emotion. Alternative motion of approval is modified by the planning commission, approval in part, denial in part, denial, or any combination can be sent, submitted for approval. And if you do that, the alternative to motion, and I, and we'll always have this in the staff report, if you choose to deny something, it would say, it has to at least include one of the criteria that you feel or believe is applying the commission is not being met. It doesn't have to be all four. It's just one of these hasn't been met, so you could say I recommend uh, denial of this application because it doesn't meet criteria one of seven, thirteen seventy six B, uh, you know, of the ordinance. I hope you know, it's terribly cumbersome and confusing and a lot uh, for you to go through, but I think it, it's probably in the best interest of the city if, you know, uh, we do start doing this. I know you've done a really good job in the past. I'm not saying you are, but we just need to um, continue to follow the ordinance as you have, and I think it's uh, you know, if we have it right in front of you, hopefully it'll make it easier for you. Do you have any questions?
I, I just wanted to comment. It seems to me like this will make it things easier for us to do the job.
I hope so.
Appropriately, so I appreciate it.
I hope so, and I, I realize it's a lot, um, and sometimes in the heat of the moment, it can get uh, maybe you can get a little bit confused or, or lost, but just take a deep breath and go back and we'll try to help, but you know, I think you guys do, or you guys do a great job in what you're doing, and so I think this is what I've heard for the last few meetings that you, you wanna see staff doing for you, so hopefully.
Yeah, thanks, Larry. I just wanted to kinda echo Commissioner Shelton. It's like, when we're um, trying to, especially in the negative, not the positive, we really kinda struggle a little bit on uh, picking up the, the proper verbiage, and this will definitely help a lot. So, thanks.
All right, thank you for putting us through that. Uh, this says five, I shouldn't say it that way. That was a fantastic presentation. Thank you, Larry. Uh, it is five fifty four, so we'll adjourn for six minutes and be back at six o'clock for a regular meeting. We are calling to order the December fifth, twenty twenty-three uh planning commission meeting for the city of West Jordan. Commissioners Richardson, Winn, Thomas, and uh, sorry, Alan and Shelton are here. I almost skipped myself. Anyway, uh our presence, Commissioners Hatch and uh Quinny are. Excused for this evening. Do we need to get more chairs in here? Do we have more chairs? Push the uh, can we uh. Can we bring the DS a little bit forward and get another row here, maybe? So I've been on the planning commission for almost four years and I haven't seen it this crowded before. It's good. People are interested. This is wonderful. Being and we apologize for that. Somebody's always got to be on the front, but there is more seating up here available.
Just remember, if you're on the first row, no biting.
Larry, Alan, thank you. Scott, thank you.
There's still some more seats up here.
Yeah, still have four here and possibly one over here. All right, well, let's uh, let's get into this so we. Uh have the opportunity here, everyone uh that is interested in discussing. So uh. On the meeting, first agenda item, approve the minutes for November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Any discussion or emotion? Commissioner Winn.
I move to approve the very well-done minutes.
Commissioner Shelton?
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, Commissioner Winn, a second, Commissioner Shelton, all in favor. Motion carries. Julie, they were excellent. That was, that's a tome. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, for the benefit of those in the room, there are still some seats up here if anybody's interested. I'm curious, because I want to get you all home as soon as possible, but also be able to hear you appropriately. Can we do a show of hands? Uh, hopefully everybody has an agenda. I'll read this. If you are here to discuss the Highland South Lot Three Pad C, please raise your hand. Okay, applicant, sorry, if you're a member of the public. Okay. Uh, if you are here for the Wood Ranch Bistro, item number three, please raise your hand. Okay, applicant, right? Uh, if you are a member of the public here for Jordan River Heights, please raise your hand. Item number four. Okay, you're here for Copper Meadows General Plan Amendment, item number five, please raise your hand. All right. Is there, uh, so Scott, is there anything keeping us from moving item five to the front, or do we need to make sure that the. Public hearings are done in order?
Yeah, I would defer to Mr. Murray, although looking at, and I don't want to presuppose. The commissioners' actions, but the other items that you mentioned ahead of the Copper Meadows seem like they're fairly quick. And it might be good to just get those done. That would be my recommendation.
Commissioners, what do you think?
As far as your bylaws or rules, by motion, you can make a procedural motion and move items around on the agenda, but. I would concur with uh Mr. Langford's recommendation that those items two, three, and four would be very quick, so.
I I agree. Yeah, let's just go ahead and zip through stuff and we'll get you guys home quickly.
Okay, so for these first few items, the public hearing with final action by the planning commission, these first uh i- items, two, three, and four. The the next three that we're going to be talking about are to the planning commission and then that's it. There will still be an opportunity for the public to. Uh, explain, discuss, uh, not discuss, have an opportunity to provide a comment if they so desire. And we'll get to that in just a minute. Well, let's go ahead and move on then. So item number two, the Highland South Lot Three Pad C. At seventy-eight thirty-six South Fifty-six Hundred West, preliminary site plan and conditional use permit in SC two zone. With Barrett Peterson, Peterson Development, the applicant, and Taylor Jensen uh here for staff. We could have the applicant. Please come up. And uh, it is your opportunity. I don't know if you saw the first part of the presentation. You get to promote your application and then we'll ask staff for some technical update.
Thank you very much.
A button on the right, please. Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, good, good evening. Nice to be with you, planning commission, and everyone else here that is with us all tonight. My name's Paul Peterson Development, or Paul Paul Spring with Peterson Development, excuse me. And um, I'm here to discuss uh retail at the Home Depot Center that we have uh provided and and helped in. Get going with the city with the Smith Center over a period of time. We're very pleased with the commercial district there that we've created and in partnership with the city. Uh, we now, now that we have Home Depot open, we're looking to focus on the pads. So the pad that we're focused on right now is Pad C or Lot Number Five outlined in in red right there. We, and looking through the conditions of which I am discussing tonight, I believe, we believe that we meet the conditions of the general plan. Uh, the zoning, uh, also the proposed use of retail. With this building is a, is a uh six, is a forty-eight hundred square foot, excuse me, a six thousand square foot building. Wait, so three tenant building. The tenants FYI for interests are are that are interested in looking to sign leases with us are Chipotle. Uh, Wingstop and Nothing Bunk Cakes. Uh, we've been working with them for a year and negotiating this, these lease transactions. They're very excited to be there. Uh, again, this building is is approximately six thousand square feet. Uh, it meets the public safety standards of the city, uh, access of streets. Where it's working out really very well. The the parking is a little bit short as per code. But we can certainly discuss that tonight. When you look at the aggregate number of parking within the center itself, within the retail pads itself, it does fit the conditions. And uh, it's interesting to note that with COVID and all the things that have been going on, we all know that drive-throughs are very popular, sometimes a little too popular. We'd like to have those dine-in restaurants. We all know and understand that, but recent studies indicate that sixty to seventy percent of business of the QSR. Or the quick service restaurants are through drive-throughs. And uh, it's it's necessitated because of that, the dine-in has has shrunk and so. So you'll see a reduction of twenty to twenty-five percent in the size of some of these drive-through buildings right now because dine-in. Is not as popular on these quick service restaurants. So you'll see that uh, you'll see that in the coming period of time that some of these restaurants will be smaller, these these type of restaurants. So anyway, we believe we fit the conditions within the conditional use and also preliminary site plan. I'm certainly here to address any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commission, uh, Commissioners, questions for the applicant? Commissioner Shelton?
Uh, when you mentioned the parking, that it's not quite sufficient for this lot. Tell me about pedestrian safety and and why you've done it to to address that with with this, because. Looks like people are going to have to be traversing some streets when it's really busy.
Yeah, when you say streets, you're talking about drive aisles.
Yeah, yes, thank you. That's what I meant, yes.
And I believe, and I I know our engineers have talked with Taylor, uh, Taylor about this and and Todd Johnson and so forth. About what we do with the sidewalks going from building to building. We too want to make sure that we have that safety taken care of. So we will meet those conditions. Uh, foremost is safety is far most most important than anything else. So we will certainly meet those conditions.
Commissioner Richardson?
Um, you mentioned three, three businesses that are, that are um. Gonna maybe come in. Are they all going to be drive-through?
No, no, just one, just one tenant. That's Chipotle.
Thank you.
Each of these buildings, we'll talk, we're talking specifically of this, there's one drive-through and it will be Chipotle.
Commissioner, oh, they already got your question answered.
No, not really, but it's.
Okay, thank you. We'll uh call you back up if there's any further questions.
Thank you very much.
Taylor, what do you have to share with us from a technical perspective?
Great, thank you, Chair. Um, want to start with the parking. Um, yes, he's technically correct. If we look at this building by itself, there are three parking stalls. Under the minimum, but there is an overabundance of parking within the Highland South development and the, there's a parking agreement that those can be shared. Um, we have also required, and they they show it on the plans, um, pedestrian connections to go both to seventy-eight and uh fifty-six. And those will have to go to provide pedestrian access to every building. We've got uh sidewalks and crosswalks across those drive aisles to help. Uh accommodate some of those um. Some of those things. Uh, the other thing we want to talk about is, you know, we are seeing the same thing that a lot of people are going from. Parking to drive-through, we're seeing applicants really pushing back on parking standards, wanting more in drive-throughs and less in. Parking because they're just saying that they're not seeing that. Um, moving forward, other items, just to address elevations are always something that we consider at planning commission. Uh, these elevations were presented to our design review committee where they received a positive recommendation to this body. It was a uh. Unanimous vote there. Um, the land use map supports this type of use. It's a community commercial with the the zoning of SC two. One other thing I did want to talk about was when Lot Five came in for approval on the fourteenth. Uh, one of the conditions of approval there was that these accesses onto Fifty-six Hundred West be uh built because those were included with Lot Three. So as you will see, they are showing that both access from Fifty-six Hundred West and that cross access over to the drive aisle. Those are both included with this Lot Three, so that will serve in um. Uh comply with that condition that was put on Lot Five at the previous meeting. Staff isn't recommending any um conditions of approval as we feel like everything has been addressed. There's no. Uh detrimental impacts that we have anticipated, and so our uh staff recommendation is approval. Happy to have some questions the planning commission might have.
Questions for staff? All right, thank you. So this is the first public hearing that we have of tonight. The way this will work is if you are here to speak about this particular item, uh you'll have uh three minutes individually or up to five minutes as a group. Uh, selecting one individual to represent the group, I should say. Uh, which case feel free to come up to the platform podium. State your name, uh, and then the the three minutes is yours. Uh, do we have anybody online? Okay, for those that are online, if you are here to speak about this item, please raise your hand. And we'll leave it open for about fifteen to twenty seconds before we close it if we don't see anybody. All right, seeing none, we'll close this portion of, or this public hearing uh for this this item. And bring it back to uh the commission for further discussion or emotion. Commissioner Thomas?
If there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, no.
Okay, I move the planning commission approve the preliminary site plan for the Highland South Lot Three. Pad C, a three-tenant commercial pad building located at seventy-eight thirty-six South. Fifty-six hundred West, subject all of the requirements of approval.
Okay, Commissioner Winn?
I second that motion. We have a motion, Commissioner Thomas, a second for Commissioner Winn. Further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Thomas, you want to take the second?
I'll take the second one. I move the planning commission approve the conditional use permit. For a restaurant, fast food, general for the Highland South Lot Three Pad C with the conditions and requirements of. Approval listed in this report.
Commissioner Winn?
I second that motion.
Yeah, we've got a motion, Commissioner Twi- Thomas, a second twin. Second, second from Commissioner Winn. Further discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Paul, thank you for bringing some diversity to the west area of West Jordan. Much appreciated. Uh, moving on to agenda item number three, the Wood Ranch Bistro at seventy-one eighty-eight West Hidden Hills Way. A preliminary site plan in a PCH zone. Third Cadence LLC, Gary Langston, the applicant, Larry representing staff. Please uh come forward and present your application.
Gary Langston with Third Cadence. I'm a member of the development team. Um, as you recall, we've already brought three plats before you. Plats one, two, and three, and this bistro, which is a part of our development agreement, is is our first commercial building. In the site, we'll have a second building that will come at a future time, and you can see that in the site plan. This one really is our sales center as well as it's a food and beverage location. If you've been to Daybreak and the development that we worked on there, it's very similar to the hub that was located on the west side of that development. Wood Ranch is very much built around centers. This is certainly the center and really the focal activity, focal point for what we plan to do. Uh, within the development itself. This building uh. Plan to have the generally a coffee shop is, we have the operator in place for that already. Uh, and we suspect that uh for the next several years, it will also service that sales center where. Once again, similar to Daybreak, residents could come there, or excuse me, uh, future buyers could come there and we would generally orient them. To which builder they should talk to based on their price points, demographics, um, whether they're out with their family, et cetera. And then the food and beverage really is just, it's creating activity uh and a point of interest for the building or for the area. The second building, uh, is we call it this community hall. We're not here to talk about that one tonight, but. That would be really the the headquarters for the homeowners association for the development. Would also have meeting spaces for larger gatherings, whether they were uh related to us as the development team. It could be rented out for receptions, weddings, et cetera. And then lastly, we do have an amphitheater in that area, which would be. Available for small summer concerts, uh, small activities, uh, and then once again, certainly wedding receptions, events of those types. You'll notice this is uh sort of built into the hillside. It's within the area that we generally refer as a really classy name, T D O S, Transfer Development Open Space. It's it's a. An acronym that's short for our native open spaces, okay? We're intending to keep as much of that untouched as possible, and this is really backing up right to the edge of that. This is kind of uh the ending point of a central meadow that we call it. It's. Uh, a variety of different open spaces that all congregate to this location, so this is the confluence of a variety of different trail types. Uh sidewalks, and it's really the the hub or the focal point of where we want to bring people to learn more about Wood Ranch. Uh, whether they be residents, their prospective buyers, um, city officials, et cetera. The buildings are both one-story. The the bistro is about twenty-two hundred square feet in total. The second building will be about thirty-four hundred. Square feet. As is outlined in the staff report, we believe that it meets the intent of what's described in the zone and the MDA. Meets those obligations. You'll notice that the architecture is very much a modern, modern mining look, so it's heavy on steel and concrete and glass. Generally pretty simple structures, one-story in elevation. Taking advantage of views certainly back to the north and the hillside and protecting um from the elements in terms of sunlight and whatnot. Southern exposure is generally shaded, uh, as is western exposure. Let's see. The plan is, uh, should this be approved, would be to build this building this year, uh, or excuse me, in twenty twenty-four. We would complete it twenty twenty-four. We'd complete the community hall in twenty twenty-five. And then what's not shown at this location, but a separate location would be the third structure, which is our pool facility, would come online in twenty twenty-six. Uh, each of those three buildings are connected along this central corridor and uh. Provide certainly the focal point for all the activities that are in Wood Ranch. Let's see. provide certainly the focal point for all the activities that are in Wood Ranch. Let's see, um. I think that's all I have. If you have some questions, ring.
Thank you. Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Richardson, you've.
Yes, um, my only concern is, um, it's this property seems to be sandwiched in between one eleven and come on you guys, help me. Seven, seven thousand south, or, you know, two, two, oh, Mountain View or anyways.
West of you on eleven.
Uh huh.
It's located at approximately seventy-three hundred south.
Right, um. It's not sandwiched in between, um, seventy, seventy, seven thousand and okay, and all right. I was just wondering, you know, it's gonna be outdoor space and I was just kind of concerned about the noise. Did you guys look or think about the noise? Because, um, you know, eventually it'll be pretty. Is this ele- it's, it's, um, the roads are a little lower than this project.
So you can enter into this general area of, uh, of Wood Ranch either off of seventy-four hundred south or a secondary road which is seventy-two hundred?
Yes.
If you enter in off of seventy-four hundred, you're generally climbing the entire way as you arrive at the bistro.
Okay.
Um, it's tucked into the, the foothills, it's sort of on the edge of the open space. It's flanked by homes on both sides. Uh, the area to the south is generally a plaza area where we think we could with the city's permission, we could close off the streets. We could have a little festival of sorts there. We could, uh, have food trucks.
But you're not concerned about the noise potential from the, but the traffic on one eleven anyways?
No, it's actually, it's about three-quarters of a mile west of that road.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Commissioner Shelton?
One of the conditions for approval is, uh, some, some way of blocking off the, the roof from hikers on those trails. Have you thought about what you're gonna do aesthetically? Like, is it gonna, is it not just gonna be a chain link fence, right?
No, good. Definitely not a chain link fence. So we're exploring the option of actually having it be a, a green roof where we would plant, uh, there's these trays you can buy and you plant grass on top of it. We don't want to actually promote access to the top of it, so we will fence it off probably with a cable fence or a barrier of some sorts, and then we're contemplating that the slope above it that we would use something that's a little bit prickly, a rose bush or something like that, that would generally prevent people from wandering through there and staying off the roof deck.
And at the same time still look nice. I like that. That's good. Thank you.
Commissioner Wen?
Uh, last time you were here, I, if I remember right, you said that the housing was starting to come online about a year from now? Is that?
It's a little sooner than that. We're hoping to begin model construction next spring with, uh, holding a grand opening late next summer. And then this building would come online with that model home complex.
That was what I was asking. Thank you.
All right, we'll call you back if there's another question. Larry, walk us through the technical side of it.
Um, I think the applicant's done a good job of explaining, um, their project. One thing I'll say is this was approved, the design review committee reviewed this back in May. So almost six months ago, um, and recommended approval with the concerns the Commissioner Shelton brought up. And without staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions for staff? All right, uh, this is our second public hearing of the evening. If you are here to speak about this particular item, the Wood Ranch Bistro, uh, you have three minutes to do so. Please, uh, come to the podium, state your name, and then your three minutes will begin. If you're online, feel free to raise your hand. We'll give it about ten seconds. Ten seconds always feels longer when nobody's speaking. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for the Wood Ranch Bistro and bring this back to the commission for further discussion or emotion. Commissioner Shelton?
I'd like to make a motion if there's no other discussion.
Please do.
I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary site plan for the Wood Ranch Bistro building, subject to meeting all the requirements of approval, and those requirements being number one, two, three, four, and five.
Commissioner Richardson?
I second that.
All right, we have a motion for Commissioner Shelton, a second by Commissioner Richardson, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number four on our agenda, the Jordan River Heights subdivision. Uh, this is at ninety-two seventy south Temple Drive. A preliminary subdivision plat, twenty-nine lots and one parcel on nine acres in the R-one-eight C zone. Next Level Homes Kyle Denos applicant with Larry representing the, uh, city staff. Are you Kyle?
Hello, no. I'm John Thomas, one of the owners of Next Level Homes. Thanks for having me. Um, as you all know, we're, we're required to follow the general plan to address the present future needs for West Jordan City and West Jordan City's, uh, long range and policies are directed by your city, your city planners here. And so we want to provide future growth, provide public services, enhance, enhance the qualities of our unique city here. The proposed plat for Jordan River Heights is consistent with this general plan. It's a medium density, um, subdivision. It's located on thirteen hundred west, right across from, uh, the nursery. Uh, and about ninety-two eighty south. It has been, uh, a, a project long in the, in the making. It's zoned R-one-eight. Has a medium density location. But our lots are in fact a lot larger than the, the eight thousand square foot requirement. Um, in fact, three of the lots are large enough to be our, our, our one-ten, six of the lots are large enough to be our one-twelve. We have twelve of the lots are eighty-four hundreds, uh, square feet plus, one lot at eighty-five fifty-five and seven lot between nine thousand and nine, ninety-five hundred square feet. Um, the most common complaint you all get from these public hearings is that T-word, traffic. And we've, we've, uh, addressed this issue with a traffic impact study, this new subdivision. And the conclusion of that traffic study was that traffic impact for these lots would have little impact on the development and further suggests that another entrance onto thirteen hundred west and if, and a future connection to fifteen hundred west behind the subdivision to the west would allow for a continuous network of streets. That will benefit the neighborhood to the north. Dead-end streets are not what West Jordan plan envisions. In fact, the plan encourages neighborhoods to be integrated and connected for neighborhood convenience for trash collection, snow removal, city services. We are installing a pedestrian walkway easement on fifteen hundred west at our cost so that neighbors to the northern neighbors, neighborhood will be able to walk to the park using our, our sidewalk and easement. This has been a longstanding complaint from the neighbors, the mayor. This access is needed to avoid long drives around our property. We have complied with this request. We've also complied with the desires of the city to have speed reduction pinch points to discourage speeding in the Jordan River Heights neighborhood at our expense. Jordan River Heights is also solving a major sewer flow issue along thirteen hundred west that for years has flooded homes with raw sewage, causing the city to pay for damage and cleanup due to a section of the sewer that is flat and its piping that is too small on thirteen hundred, close to Ninetieth. It's a fortuitous time to be doing these, these changes with all the road constructions with the UDOT. So once that is completed, the sewer sections will be stubbed into the section that we have committed to complete for the city of West Jordan. Uh, which are two, are two runs between a few manholes just off Ninetieth. This is, uh, uh, and this will cost us as developers about five hundred thousand dollars. And it's not on our, on or close to our property, obviously, but our neighborhood will benefit from being able to use that sewer. And that's where we, our sewer will flow is towards Ninetieth. Jordan River Heights is, it, um, we have proposed it on this plat sufficient stormwater detention retention basins with an engineered storm brick si- um, si- storm brick system installed on parcel A, close to thirteenth on the, um, southeast corner there on the plat. With, with also additional swells and drainage on the, on the rear of, of most of the lots. All utilities and city services are adequate to serve this site, including garbage collection, snow removal, water, police and fire, parks and recreation, roadways, street lighting and other services. The proposed plat complies with all provisions of title, zoning ordinance, and other development standards of the city. We've complied with every request from the city council, um, and this, this body in our two prior meetings, um, including been oblimited to easements, improvements and requests. We will continue to comply with all codified building department requirements of West Jordan once we, once we begin construction to provide a beautiful neighborhood. As a result, the homes that are built in this neighborhood will be of a very high quality and price point, reflecting the larger lot sizes, cost of development and current market conditions. I appreciate your time tonight, and if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Thank you. Uh, questions for the applicant? You're very direct.
Thanks so much.
Call you back up if there's any other question.
Perfect.
Larry, anything to add?
Um, as the applicant said, this was zoned earlier in the year to R-one-eight. Uh, the one thing I want to point out is the, uh, Stup Tree connection to it actually leads to Brigadoon Park Drive, which goes out to Redwood and then Brigadoon, that would be another access point for those neighbors to go, um, out to thirteen hundred west. And as applicant talked about, there will be traffic calling, calming chicanes in the middle of, uh, uh, this road in the subdivision to hopefully, uh, you know, so it's not such a drag strip or long, uh, straight way of a slow traffic down. And with that, staff recommends approval to the planning commission.
Commissioner Thomas?
Just one quick question for staff. With the expansion of thirteen hundred west, will the right of way of any of this property have to be impacted on that?
No, they're taking that into consideration with this plot. They've been working with our engineering department for probably close to two years.
So if I'm not mistaken, that's gonna happen next year, correct? Okay.
And they're working with them on the sewer upgrade also on thirteen hundred west.
So they're gonna do that at the same time when they do?
Um, they were hoping to do it before the Dominion Energy thing, but I don't know when it's gonna happen. It'll happen sometime next year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment that, um, when I canvassed in this last campaign election, uh, election campaign, um, around thirteen hundred, the residents were saying that that street's been torn up for years. And, um, I just want to make the comment that, you know, I know it's necessary. We have to tear it up again or we're gonna be. But I just wanted to make that comment. I also, uh, should have made a comment to the applicant, uh, Next Level Homes. Thank you for this development. I think it's gonna be beautiful. Okay.
A technical question for the staff. I'm just, I'm curious about the pinch points in the road. Do we end up with a situation where people are parking on the side of the road and it becomes too narrow to either drive by or it becomes too difficult for us to maintain? Or do we have other areas in the city where we've done this before?
This is one of the first times, uh, we've tried this specific measure. It's, uh, in an attempt to avoid speed tables. That's something that we're trying to reduce, uh, the impacts throughout the city. Now, uh, parking should be limited in these specific areas and we'll address that at the final design of the subdivision.
Wonderful. All right, uh, this is the third public hearing for the evening. So if you are here to speak on item number four, the Jordan River Heights, you will, uh, have three minutes. Please come to the podium, state your name. Uh, if you're online, please raise your hand. We'll give it about ten seconds before we close the public hearing if nobody speaks. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this item, bring it back to the planning commission for further discussion or emotion. Commissioner Thomas?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. Um, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary subdivision plat for the Jordan River Heights subdivision, subject to the requirements of approval listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Shelton?
I second the motion.
All right, we've got a motion, Commissioner Thomas, a second by Commissioner Shelton. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Good. I was about to suggest that we had a couple of seats available. Uh, there's one here, one there, one over here, if anybody's interested. We are on to our fifth item of the evening, the Copper Meadows General Plan Amendment, Rezone and Master Development Agreement Plan. This is eighty-two hundred south Stokesley Drive, uh, general plan amendment for approximately seventy-five acres from a future park, public facilities and very low density residential to low density residential, rezone from VLSFR, uh, LSFR and PF zones to PC zone and a master development plan and agreement. Barrett Peterson, the applicant, and Taylor Jensen here for staff. Uh, Mr. Peterson, come on up. Please present your application.
Excuse me. Good evening. Uh, thanks for your time tonight. Barrett Peterson, Peterson Development, uh, also Peterson Homes. Uh, two twenty-five south, two hundred east, uh, Salt Lake City, Utah, if I need to do that for the record. Uh, yeah, appreciate your time this evening. Uh, just some background on us. Uh, I've worked with Peterson Developments, a family business uh, for the last twenty-some-odd years. Uh, since I can remember, we've worked here in West Jordan. It's been probably thirty years since, uh, my father before me and my brothers worked here in the city. And we have a track record here. Uh, have done a lot of the development over the, uh, intersection of seventy-eighth south and fifty-sixth west. A lot of the commercial there and then residential on both sides of the street there. So this is, uh, this is kind of a usual business for us and yet it's a very hot topic item tonight and I understand, and I know there's a number of neighbors here to speak, speak about this project and we're, we're sensitive to that. Uh, I gave you that, that history just to let you know that we're invested in the city. We've been here a long time. Uh, you heard the other item this evening, uh, right there in front of Home Depot, the, the Highland South application. So, uh, and in that course of doing business here in the city, we have a relationship with, with staff, with council. I don't know the five of you as well personally, of course, but, um, some of our employees who are here tonight will be addressing you and they've been before you, uh, in the past. In the, in the time that we've worked here in the city, we've done a number of different communities, planned communities being one that we'll focus on tonight. Uh, we have a fifty-five and older community upcoming in the city and, uh, our two planned communities, kind of to show some of our track record are, uh, Stone Creek and the Highlands, which go from about forty-eighth west all the way up to about sixty-seventh west, uh, in between seventy-eighth south and eighty-second south, uh, and some of it. Part, part of that goes a little further north, uh, from seventy-eighth. But so, you know, we have a history of doing that. We love the planned community vehicle and that's what we're presenting to you tonight. Also to give a little bit of history, uh, we have met with DRC on this project. We've met with Council of the Hole, which is basically the city council. We've met with neighbors, interfaced with neighbors a couple of different times and it's a messy process. We do our best to respond and to try and, uh, receive, receive feedback and then put forth what we think is best. And we balance the rights of, uh, property ownership with neighbors' concerns, staff concern, council concern, all those things. And it's, it's a tricky process and, uh, sometimes not everyone, everyone's happy, but we try and collaborate and make it a good process. So our community tonight, uh, not sure who I should look to to is it Taylor back there? Thank you, Taylor. Uh, maybe we can go to the first slide or two. Uh, I'll just give some of the highlights. I'll turn a little bit of time over to Kalen Nichols, our planner, who's been before the planning commission before, and Jeff Seaman, uh, and we'll try to be mindful of time. Yeah, let's go to the concept if you don't mind, Taylor. Thank you. So this is about a seventy-five acre, uh, project. This is the concept right here. Thank you, Taylor. Uh, and we believe after, you know, a year and a half of working with staff or more, this, I think we've uh, engaged the property owner and, and started that process close to two years ago. This is what we've come up with. And this is a mixture through the planned community, uh, vehicle, planned community zone, uh, single-family homes, uh, some town homes and then some, some carriage homes. You see a mixture of housing types for people at different times of life. You see some open space in parks. You see walkability. And again, some of the detail I'll leave to, uh, Kalen, who's more of a professional on this. Uh, we believe it's a very reasonable density. This is a low density, uh, they're asking for four-point-nine units to the acre. And, um, you're gonna hear a lot of the reasons why this doesn't work, but we've, we've tried to be mindful of this. We believe that this is, uh, the project at the right time now in the city. And maybe I will end some of my comments by making a little bit of an impassioned plea that we need housing in this state. And I'm not, as a developer, not the only one saying that. We had our governor come out today and mentioned that he wants thirty-five thousand new homes for people who have a hard time affording homes to be built in the next five years. This is not on the high end of the density range at all. This is low density. It's a reasonable project. We've tried to be thoughtful about the neighbors. We've tried to put some of the, the denser parts of the project inside the community to buffer. Uh, so I, I would ask you to con- So I, I would ask you to consider this, even though there's, there's a negative staff report and things that go with it and we can answer questions why. We believe this is the right project at this time in the city and going forward. And I ask you, as you look at this, if this goes to something much more lower density. Where are kids and grandkids gonna live? We need housing of all types and this plan provides that. So that would be my uh, my ending comment and I'll turn the time over to Kalen. We'd love to reserve the right to answer questions as they come up and uh. Be collaborative that way. So Kalen, uh, I'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you for your time tonight. I want to thank the residents for showing up tonight because it's. It just shows that we can actually stand up for. Things that we believe in and for our, our neighborhood. So I appreciate you guys standing up tonight and, and voicing your opinions. Um, so I'm gonna just touch base a little bit off of what Barrett said. Um. We are asking for four point nine, four point nine units per acre, a maximum of three hundred and seventy-six units. Um, to the north, the density in the sycamores is an average of two point two four on just the portion that's abutting this property. So we know that that's a much lower density than we're asking for there. But to the south, there's low density and varying density, which is approved with the Jones Ranch um, plant community. And their average, um, the varying density can go up to ten unit per acre. But between the low density and the village nine, um, the average was eight point two. So we feel that the four point nine is not really too far out of the park as far as what's going on to the south. Um, so the property that we are looking at are seventy-six acres. Um, on the north has rolling hills and a beautiful knoll. And on the south is a gravel operation that is closing down. So we have uh. Quite a bit of mitigation to deal with on this site. It's not just a little bit of mitigation, it's quite a bit. And we have fifty-eight feet from the top of the existing quarry to the bottom of the pit. To mitigate and to make sure that it's correctly mitigated. Um, that is one of the main reasons we are asking for the P C zone, so that we can have the flexibility to. Um, put in not just open space, but make sure that the site works well with the existing quarry so we can. Grade what we need to and make it a functional site again. In our development agreement, um, we have promised to. Before any, any site plan approval or subdivision approval, that we will make sure we do geotechnical and geological hazard studies. To make sure that the city knows what's going on out there and what we're facing. Also, prior to final approval of any phase that has cuts or fills above six feet. A construction quality assurance plan will be submitted to the city for review. And this will be the guiding document that will determine what needs to happen to, to make sure that it's stable and it's secure for building on. So the city will have their hand on this all the way through as far as the mitigation on the gravel pit. We feel that a planned community can make this site. A whole site and a nice community rather than two pieces. Um, separated just because of the use that is already existing on the south side. So combining them, um, not only. Allows for the mitigation to happen on the site, but, but also can make it a nice community altogether. Um, Barrett mentioned that we went to the, the meeting of the hole with city council. Um, that was on June twenty-first and we had first proposed four hundred and twenty units. A density of five point five units per acre, um, in the medium density category. Um, council had mentioned that they're worried about utilities, which. We know that's a big issue on this site and that will have to be worked through as we move forward with it if it's, if it's approved. Um, that is, of course, we won't develop unless there is water. That's how it works and. We know that there are gonna be answers we need to find on that front. And I know Jeff will talk more on that in a minute. But currently staff has agreed that a hundred and twenty-three units do have water based on the master plan. And that's what our development agreement says. A hundred and twenty-three units is all we would be able to build unless we figure out a plan for moving forward with the water. And all of this is included in the development plan that we've submitted to you for review. So you can see the. The different um, studies we've done on the utilities. Um, council also mentioned that the carriage homes that we were proposing, um, we had six per private lane. And they did not like that, so we reduced it down to four. Um, they wanted a little more space in them, a little more parking and we've accommodated that in our site, in our design. Um, we know that staff still has some issues with them with utilities and that we hope we can work out with staff. Um, maybe as a condition of approval, but we are definitely willing to work on that. Um, as you can see, we've, we've shown two different types of carriage homes. Um, we could alley load them if that's a. A nicer product that they would like to see rather than the carriage where they're fronting onto the shared drive. And we are, yeah, we are very willing to work on. On the option that they feel is best and that they like the most. Um, so based on the comments that we got from city council, they wanted us to meet with the residents. That was their main concern was. Hearing what the constituents had to say as per this plan. And so we met on um, July seventeenth with residents. And overall, they wanted less units. They wanted larger lots, especially on the northwest side where their homes are, their lots are quite large. Um, they were worried about parking, especially in the carriage lots, which um, that was another concern of the council. They generally liked the layout in open space. Um, if, if development was going to occur, they generally liked it. They opposed development altogether, but. Um, but if it was going to occur, they, they generally liked the layout. They liked that the town homes and the carriage lots were tucked internal to the site and all the sides were flanked with single family. Um, so based on their comments and what we've heard from um, many more residents and staff. We have changed our concept to include the three hundred and seventy-six units, so a decrease of forty-four units from our previous concept. Um, we are now at four point nine, which puts us in the low density category. Um, we increased the size of the lots on the northwest portion. There are some of those lots that are near ten thousand square feet. Um, some of them closer to the trailhead are seven and eight thousand square feet. But yes, we've increased the size of those, so we're looking at between seven and nine thousand square foot lots that are abutting their, their community. Um, there's also a buffer between them. It looks really small on a concept, but um, there's a fifteen foot landscape buffer with the trail. Plus a twenty foot setback to the residence. So um, as we've looked, there's a hundred feet between any of their homes and the adjacent homes. Um, we also have, um, I told you about the carriage lots. We decreased the number of carriage lots per private lane. Um, we included pedestrian walkways to the carriage homes, the front of the carriage homes. Um, and we are very willing to work with staff to make sure that they are exactly what staff is wanting to see. And acceptable to the city with utilities and, and everything else that way. So our. Um, the reason that we really like planned communities and we've done, as Barrett mentioned, we have done two very successful planned communities in West Jordan. They provide a range of housing that meets the lifestyle and the life cycle of the family. And we have seen that in our, in our subdivisions and our, we've done traditional subdivisions, but in our planned communities. Having the range of different sizes of homes, different lot sizes, houses with yards, some without. Um, we've really seen communities thrive. And in Stone Creek in particular, um, we've had. Um, senior housing and town homes and single family varying lots. And I personally live in Stone Creek, so I know firsthand that our community thrives and there are people who live there who have. Who've lived in the, started in the town homes and they've moved on to single family as their families have grown. And I've had friends who've, lives have changed and they didn't want to leave the community and they were able to stay because they could move from a single family home to the town homes. I've had neighbors who've moved their parents into their ranches because they want their parents closer. There's all kinds of scenarios, but I have a lot of neighbors who have stayed in the same community because of the options of housing types. And I think that's a pretty neat thing that comes from a planned community. So, um. So one other thing with a planned community, a minimum of five percent or in our case nineteen homes. Would be meeting the needs of moderate income families. And that's one of the requirements of a planned community zone. And we think that's a great idea to have some affordability throughout the city, not just in its high density centers. Just allowing some more people the chance to, to own a home in West Jordan. Um, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the amenities that come with this. With a single family, traditional neighborhood, you won't see. You could possibly, but you probably won't see the trails, the open spaces incorporated into the lots themselves. And so your open space is within the lots. There's not. Public um, amenities as much. And in a planned community, and especially this planned community. Um, our concept that we're currently showing has thirty-two percent open space. Um, which six of those acres is within parks. And they will have pavilions and picnic tables and a playground on each one of them. Um, this planned community will have an extensive trail system. The, if you look through the southern open space, we have a twelve foot asphalt trail that will run from Stokesly. All the way through that open space and connect up to our parks and our, if you can look at the, the purple line in the middle. That is a ten foot urban trail that will front, um, be fronted with front porches and front doors. Along that whole street. And eight to nine foot trails on the, on eighty-two hundred south and Stokesly Drive. Um, that was just continued from the existing trail on eighty-two hundred south. If that needs to be increased to a ten foot trail, that's definitely something we can look at doing. But we were, we are connecting all the trail systems to the exterior of the site so that it can be used. And connected to um, the commercial and the, the schools that are to the east. And throughout the site so that people can. Enjoy the, their community and connect to each of the open spaces with the trail system. Um, the ten foot urban trail will extend the length of the walkable core street, our main street. And. Um, that walkable core street will have um. Bulbouts to slow traffic designated on street parking so that there's no question of where you can park and where you cannot park. Uh, our roadway would be widened um, slightly beyond the standard for that, just to make sure that that's accommodated. And we would have crossings, um, where the, not just where the trails are, but also the. Intersections of the roadways, so to make sure that the pedestrians are completely safe. So I mentioned the open space. Um, the P C zone requires a twenty percent minimum open space. So that would be fifteen acres with our six acres of groomed open space. Um, this would be H-way maintained. So um, we are asking for. Um, the city to add, to go away from the open space that is shown on the. The future land use map. The city has told us that they don't have any intention of purchasing or maintaining that at any time. And so we thought that a P C zone would be appropriate here in that we would still have twenty percent open space. For the residents and park space for the residents to use with that use going away. Um, we're also providing gateway monuments on eighty-two hundred south and Stokesly entry monument at the two vehicular entrances. Um, streetlights throughout and we're proposing a trailhead for the overall community at the end of eighty-two hundred south where it dead ends. And that would be um, public, that would be city maintained and owned. Um, native and water wise landscaping for the open spaces and for each residence will be a vital part of the design. Um, knowing that water is hard to come by and. Um, so we want that to be a real, real focus for this community is water wise landscaping throughout. Um, as many of the residents probably know, the property includes um, habitat for mule deer. And um, so we're gonna use the open space corridors carefully so that we can. Let them continue to graze in the site and. Um, the natural open space areas will be mowed twice a year and this is something we've done in both the Highlands and in Stone Creek. Um, when the grasses get tall and dry, they're mowed and then maintained so that it's less of a fire hazard, but. They are quite beautiful. And if you've ever looked out over the open spaces and the trail system throughout those two communities. They are amazing and they are heavily used and they are not an eyesore as many may think. I actually live right, my backyard is part of Stone Creek, part of the wash and um. It's magnificent, the wildflowers that have grown there and the bush and the, the trees and the things that have just come in. We have not irrigated it. It's. It's not irrigated and it naturally has just started growing plant life, so it's amazing. The architecture, um, it's outlined in the development plan as well as far as what we're held to as a standard of architecture. Um, we want it to be timeless. We're gonna incorporate brick, stone, stucco, cement. And front porch is being the dominant feature on each of the streets. Um, that's what we've done on most of our communities there. The front porches are the dominant feature. And the house types and finishes within this community will be carefully planned so that there's great architectural diversity on each street. And I would hope that you can look to our other planned communities and see. Um, the quality and the, the standard we've been held to and we will do the same on this planned community. Appreciate your time tonight.
Uh, thanks. Uh, Jeff Seaman, Peterson Development. Um, so I wanted to talk a little bit about. Uh, the neighborhood meeting we had on July seventeenth. We held it at Nelson's Frozen Custard and maybe it was the custard that um. Drew the crowds, I'm sure, but seeing that we don't have custard here tonight, I guess it's our project, so. Um, no, I, I, along with Kalen, I'm, I'm impressed um. About the, the neighbors who've shown up and have taken an interest in the, in our project. Um, I think there's a lot of myths out there and hopefully um, through what Kalen talked about, we've dispelled a, a number of those myths. Um, like the last applicant said, with any new development, there's a T word, traffic. And that's one of the main concerns that we heard about um, during, during our uh, July seventeenth meeting. But it was kind of interesting because if, looking at this map, you see eighty-two hundred south and Stokesly that surround this project. Those are both collector streets and both have um, current capacity to handle all the traffic that will be headed here. The concern that we heard most about with traffic was from the roundabout near Smith's. Crossing Mountain View Corridor at seventy-eight hundred south and that that's a fiasco. That's one of the biggest things we heard about, which is outside of the realm of our project. But we understand from the mayor that that's gonna be taken care of starting in the spring, if I understand. So there's good news coming there. Um, we also heard school capacity is an issue. Where are all these kids gonna go to school? Um, I'll touch this a little bit more when, when I conclude, but um. Uh, what I was able to find online from uh, Jordan School District is the school district analyzes. Current and projected enrollment trends to assess future capacity needs of existing schools. If school is projected to exceed capacity or if there is significant growth in a particular area, it may indicate a new need for a school. So what we are asking for tonight is a rezone of this project. That will allow the school district to say, okay, there's three hundred and seventy-six new homes coming in, in this area, in this project. We can plan for that. That's what the school district does. Another item that we heard at our meeting is town homes. Town homes is a big issue. Uh, we heard from many residents that they do not want town homes as part of this project. Um, of course, page thirty-nine of the general plan, twenty-twenty-three general plan states. The identity of a planned community is achieved through careful planned and integrated mix of land uses with the ver- variety of types of housing. The design of this project, we tried to minimize the impact of the town homes. The town homes are important here because what it does is it allows us. To, to, or to deal with one of the biggest issues that Kalen talked about is this gravel pit. Fifty-eight feet from bottom to top that has to be mitigated. There has to be an economic reason to, to do a project. And I think it's a city, um, and in fact, in the, the staff report. Um, it talks about mitigation of that um, gravel pit being a, a benefit to the city. And that's what this project does and that's why the density of this is important. Uh, the economics have to be there to make it work. We are not coming in with a project. We are coming in with a low density project. Whether the, whether the residents want to hear that or not, four point nine units to the acre is low density by your code. Um, so that's why the town homes are important. We tried to minimize the effects with neighbors by putting them on the inside of the project. But it is important and it is part of this. So, um. You know, West Jordan city staff, the planning commission, council have done a great job establishing codes. Um, that correct, that. Um, that correct, that guide, the correct and appropriate placement of high-density projects in the city. The IOZ, the TSOD, City Center Zone, the Infill Development Zone. Um, these are all zones that allow for high-density in certain areas. And we applied to West Jordan for for coming up with these zones, this is not what we're asking for in this project. What we are asking tonight is that the land use be changed um to a low-density residential. And why? Under the low-density residential, we're requesting four-point-nine units to the acre with a maximum allowable unit count of three hundred and seventy-six acres. According even to the staff report, low-density uh residential designation is appropriate in this area. The second thing we're asking is uh to rezone a PC zone. The existing zones to the north and south are both PC zones. A PC zone encourages balance of variety of housing type that meets the needs of all life stages with the mixed opportunities for today and into the future. And that's from the general plan. The PC zone and the clustering of units allows for development to provide a minimum of twenty percent open space. And would include eight percent of this open space be groomed and irrigated for parks and amenities. This is like the city um having their cake. What's the phrase, getting their cake and eating it too, I don't know, whatever it is, this is um parks coming in. Paid for by the development and paid by, paid for by the HOA that benefit the community. So it's not an expense that the uh. The city would have to uh to maintain in the future, so we know it's an uphill battle. We know the staff report um doesn't align with a lot of what we said, what after a number of meetings with staff, we kind of thought that. Um, the discussions we had that they would come in neutral and with uh or approval with conditions. And so we were a little disappointed and and confused when we got the motion to deny. And so we understand that this is an uphill battle, looking over the crowd. And hearing comments that this is the most people they've seen at a PC meeting ever. And they've been here a long time, we understand that this is an uphill battle. Yeah, Commissioner Thomas, you said that, how long have you been on the commission?
Five years.
Five years, so I don't know if I should feel good about a record or not, but. So, once again, just to repeat, what we're asking for is to um. Change the land use um general plan to low-density residential. And we're requesting to rezone as a PC zone. And we ask for you to to uh forward a positive recommendation to the council, thanks.
Thank you, uh, we do have a couple of questions, I don't know which of the three of you would like to uh to provide that or if all three of you together wanted to stand up there for a moment. But we've got a handful of questions here and then we'll uh move over to staff afterward. Alright, Commissioner Shelton.
So Jeff, you you mentioned something about needing uh the center part. More density to help you pay for the mitigation of the gravel pit, could you talk about? What what Pearson Development will be doing to that property to and and what? What needs mitigation, like is is it just? Raw gravel right now, um, and and what, what are you gonna be actually doing to that and what what are your? The costs involved, what's your investment on that? You don't need to give me dollar numbers, but just.
Yeah, uh, it's it's extensive. Essentially, in in the the staff report, it talks about um slopes. Um, what we'd initiate, what we'd really like to do and from our geotech people. At the who know dirt, I I don't know dirt as well as they do. You want to mitigate land, soil that's in the same general vicinity, so if you can see at this top right here in the northwest. Uh, you can see the slope is quite significant, what we would, what we propose doing. And we'd have to go through a whole geotechnical thing and make sure that that everything works out, but would be grading that. And moving some of that fill down to to um remediate that the extreme slopes of that gravel pit. But that is, that's a lot of dirt, it's a lot of dirt moving and that's to do it right, it costs a lot of money.
The idea is to prevent landslides in the future.
Right, I mean, the the city definitely doesn't want a situation like happened up at Draper, so houses falling off a hill. We as a builder don't want that, I mean, it's bad business, right? So we're gonna do everything in our power, work with experts in this field, geotechnical people, engineers. Um, who were will work with in conjunction with the city to make sure that it's legit.
Let me just chime in, we we have a couple of our engineers here tonight, they could answer some of these questions, probably even better than Jeff, but they're the ones that have helped. With focus engineering, we have, I think, Thomas and Seth here, I saw Seth in the back, Thomas is right here. So he could answer probably a little bit better, but yeah, we take it very seriously. We would comply with all the city ordinances and code, we do not wanna on a house, a house that has a landslide, we're we're the first to know that that's, you know. Don't want to do that, it's not the way to do business, uh, so if you have other questions, we do have a couple of engineers here tonight to to speak to this.
Well, the the thing uh like beyond even just city code, making sure that that houses aren't gonna start moving. Would of course be really important to everyone.
Further questions for the applicant? Okay, we'll bring you back up with any further questions, thank you. Taylor, what uh what would you like to add to that presentation?
Great, thank you Chair, um, I know the applicant went through it pretty detailed, so I'll just kind of go through. My slides pretty quick, but hopefully just to answer some question about the the contacts and the evaluation that um we did as staff. Um, I want to start out first for everyone here, kind of. Where we are in this process, this is a a recommendation to the city council, so whether the planning commissioner recommends approval or denial. That will go to the city council at a later date, there'll be another public notice meeting um for another public hearing. The city council will then have the ultimate decision whether to approve, deny, or to alter. Uh, if it does get approved, then we get to go through the planning uh phase with the subdivisions and the site plans, which would also have public hearings, so. It's good that you're here tonight, uh, this process doesn't end tonight, this process will continue on, so um that's important to to just touch on as well. Um, it's also important to note that, you know, there's a master development agreement proposed here, but city code will still apply. Um, I think it's in the master development agreement says anywhere that specific changes aren't being made. City code still applies, so they're not able to get around city codes if this were to be approved. Um, and then, you know, it was brought up. Staff, we always try to be neutral or recommend approval, like if a project complies, we don't want to recommend denial and. We we put a lot of thought into it and. You know, we don't like to recommend denial, but when our evaluation shows that it doesn't meet uh the standards of the code, that's why we did forward a recommendation of denial, and so. You will be hearing some of those reasons why we felt that our hands were tied and we had to make that motion, a a recommendation tonight. So here we can see the project in context, it's just that little red rectangle, it's not the whole city, uh, it's on the west side of the city. Um, below um Sycamores. Just next to eighty-two-hundred. Here we can see that this is just the future land use designation, can see a- again, uh, as you mentioned in the applicant. Uh, there's a couple land uses on there that we probably aren't going to see happen here, the the park space. City hasn't really had a plan to go purchase that property and to develop it as a park. Uh, it's also unlikely that we're going to develop that a blue portion as public facilities, so. Those are locations that we know they're not going to be that, so some sort of future land use designation change to those. On the private property would probably be appropriate, and I think the staff report mentioned that uh to that point. So here's the map, as we've talked about a a number of times, it's kind of a property that's. Got two different uh characters, uh on the north side, it's uh more natural grades. Sloping hills up into the Sycamores and into uh the Oker Mountains. Uh, on the southern portion of the property, there's a pretty significant gravel pit operation uh that happened. Under the authority of Salt Lake County is when that was approved, um, there really hasn't been any mitigation, if you go out there, the applicants mentioned there's. Very large hills, slopes, fifty-eight feet drops, y- you believe it, if you go out there and look, it hasn't been mitigated very well. So what we've done is we've looked at this, um. The applicant's proposing low-density and from our general plan, that's the table right next to the aerial, you can see the low-density allows from. Three-point-one-two-five units per acre, um, there's a number of different zoning districts that would be appropriate there. PC, which they're proposing, is one of those. We have evaluated the property adjacent to it. So to the north is very low-density residential, so that's uh up to three units per acre. And that's where we're seeing the Sycamores with lots from about a fifth to a uh two-thirds of an acre in size. South of it is the undeveloped but master-planned Jones Ranch, they have varying densities there. Uh, to the west is the High Point subdivision, that's the R-one-A development, so those are eight thousand square foot lots and then. To the west is uh unincorporated Salt Lake County, there's a, there's a rail spur there and native hill sites. We did look at the uh Sycamores property just located to the north of it, so. Calculate these thirty-one-point-seven acres that are most adjacent to it. The smallest lot there is a point-two-three acres, largest is point-eight-four. The median, going back to math, this is the one that comes right in the middle, is point-two-seven acres and the mode or the most common is the point-two-three acres. Which happened fifteen times. Mentioned the Jones Ranch uh development. Village ten and Village nine both have portions that are adjacent to the property, Village ten. Uh, that'd be up to two-point-five units per acre, where Village nine could have. Sorry, up to three units per acre for that low-density and then Village nine would allow up to ten units per acre. That red line which you see on top of the colored map is roughly the frontage that it would share with um the Copper Meadows Project. Uh, so one of the things we talked about during the pre-meeting was uh the appropriateness of the PC zone. Uh, our code says it's supposed to be two hundred acres unless the city council uh specifically approves a development that's under two hundred acres. So at seventy-six acres. If we look at this project on itself, it is below that, but as you can see here, to the north of it, there's uh six hundred and thirty acres, including what the Sycamores is within. That has a PC zoning designation, to the south in red, it's another PC development, that's the Jones Mountain or the Jones Ranch. That's six hundred and five acres and then that blue area is also zoned PC, that's a two-hundred-and-twenty acres, so. Almost fifteen hundred acres here adjacent to it have the PC zoning, and so for that reason, we think. That's something the planning commission should consider when you're making your motion, if if that alone was one of the reasons, like you should consider that. The area in orange here, that's the existing quarry, which we talked about, man. One of the unique things about the PC zone is it has bulk development standards, but then it allows the applicant to. Uh, propose changes, uh, those changes are totally up to the discretion of the planning commissioners to the council, I think we. Uh, highlighted those in your staff report where those proposed changes were, uh, you can see their proposed uh standards here in this table. We've talked about the cluster lot concept, uh, traditionally, we only allow two units to be accessed off a shared drive, so. Accessing four would be something different than what we've done in the past, there might be a way to do it. Uh, when this originally came in, as the applicant mentioned, there was six units off of a lot of these option As. Those were removed, staff was also really concerned about not being sidewalks to each a door, so that has been addressed, you can see the option A. Now, there's sidewalk to each uh unit. A concern remains with utilities, uh particularly with water and sewer, these narrow alleyways. We don't like to have public facilities in those because if they break, they flood houses. And then there also needs to be a minimum separation between those, so that's one thing our utility engineers are very concerned about is. If the private alley concept was utilized, each of those facilities would have to be in their own twenty-foot easement, they would have to be separate, so those need to be. At least forty feet wide and at that point, we'd really just want them to come in at our public road standards, whether those are owned and maintained by. Uh, private HOA, well, that that's up to them. So there's a bubble plan that they're proposing here, so areas in green are parks. Areas in yellow are their single-family residential and the multifamily portion is in orange. Uh, the PC zone does require twenty percent of the landscape or the property to be open space. Open space cannot be slopes over thirty percent, it also requires. Eight percent be manicured open space, that's where you're seeing your parks. Those have minimum acreage of two acres for each one of those open spaces, you can have like a half acre, and say all this caps like manicured open space. It also needs to have a pavilion and a playground within those, so here's what you're seeing, um, bubble planned out. We haven't evaluated for if these would actually meet those or where, one of these would probably be retention. Uh, that water retention area can't be included in that calculation, so these are all discussions we've had with them and. If this is approved, those would be ongoing discussions to have. The applicant's gone through this conceptual master plan, if this were to be approved, they're not entitled to this. Staff isn't entirely convinced that this could actually be developed even under the standards of the MDA, so we'd have to evaluate that. Uh, more intensely, if this were to have the rezoning, that was one of the things. Uh, the applicant's mentioned, we've gone back and forth, is we feel like we need more detail to be able to approve some of these design standards and they wanted to make sure that. They could get zoning in place before they provided some of that more detail, so that's kind of why it's coming to you before it's all the way flushed out. Open spell uh spaces and trails, um trails, our code does require within the PC zone here. Uh, twelve-foot trails, so I think there's a code reference there of. Thirteen-five-C-sixty requires twelve-foot trails around and through the development. So if this were to be approved, staff would say all of those eight-to-ten-foot trails need to be replaced with a twelve-foot trail and. Those trails need to go around not just through the center of the project. So, one thing that's unique about our general plan that we redid recently is we took out the goals and that's one of the things we look at with our. Uh, future land use map amendment, instead we replaced it with guiding principles. So, uh, I think we identified seven of these that we thought were most appropriate to. Uh, the project and I I think I detailed how we felt each of those uh were addressed in the staff reports, I'm not gonna spend time now. But. Uh, the general plan criteria, there's criteria A through F for approval. Here we can see uh kind of the staff's reasoning of why we're recommending denial. And that comes from failures uh in our estimation to fulfill criterias. A, B, C, and E. Some of those they uh fulfill partly but not entirely, um, this is a decision for. The planning commission to really weigh in them and make that recommendation to the council. Uh, again, with the recent criteria, staff uh had a hard time finding uh appropriate responses to criteria one, two. And four, which you can see they're highlighted in red. The MDA, MDP, they don't have criteria for approval. Because it it's more flexible, um, so staff is what we've done here is. If the planning commission did decide to recommend approval to the city council. These are seventeen items that we feel like would need to be addressed and we would ask that you'd include those as. Um, requirements if you did forward a recommendation for approval to the city council for that. So as you can see, we are recommending uh negative recommendations for all three applications and at this point, happy answering questions, the commission might have.
Questions for staff, Commissioner Shelton?
The um. In the um. What they're called, the the little cluster homes. I was looking at the driveway length and if I'm not mistaken, and maybe it doesn't apply here. Does C-council has changed code to a twenty-two-foot driveway requirement? Does that not apply to this in this situation?
Yes, that's one of those unique things because they can provide their uh propose their own bulk standards, so they would be. Proposing driveway standards that don't require the twenty-two-foot driveways.
Because of the PC zone.
Correct.
I see, oh, thank you. Um, the other question I had was regarding the open space, were you counting? Well, you you didn't actually give us a percentage of what their proposal has in open space. Did, have you calculated that?
Uh, we haven't, and that's partly because there's some significant grades here. And we're not convinced all of those are going to be under thirty.
Under thirty percent, okay.
It's also another thing that, you know, one of the criteria.
Um, it's also another thing that, you know, one of the criteria for approval in the general plan is. To maintain uh the Ocker Mountains and, and what we do feel like the gravel pit is bad, it needs to be. Mediated and we, we like the proposal to fix that. Uh, we heard the applicant talk today about grading some of that natural hillside to fill in that hole. It's the opinion of staff that that doesn't meet the, the guiding principles of the code or the, the PC zone to basically. Create another grading location to fill in the past mistake and so we, we would like to find some way to maybe. To preserve those natural hillsides and do maybe more intense grading using some other fill brought in or whatever, that, that was one of the concerns that staff had though.
Interesting, okay, I, I didn't catch on to that at the beginning, so the, uh, that thirty percent slope is a. Can't be counted if it's, it's, if it's thirty percent or greater, is that correct?
Correct, but now we're not, th- those period, those pieces that are within the gravel pit. Those aren't natural slopes, it wasn't a thirty percent slope before the gravel pit, so. Through their mitigation plan, if they brought those down under thirty percent, we would probably count those.
Okay.
Um, now areas that are natural grades, they kind of grade those. Below thirty percent to make them, but those already unnatural slopes, we, we want to work with them to get rid of those and make it a safer, more. Desirable project if this was approved.
And one more question. Uh, can you speak to the commercial requirement that's, that's uh in a PC zone and, and the lack of it here?
So it is a commercial recommendation.
Oh, it's a recommendation.
Requirement.
Thank you.
Also, there's fifteen hundred acres of PC around here, there's commercial within those, so if we're considering in context. There is commercial just down at the intersection of U one eleven, I think there's a gas station, that's what the last project did for their commercial component.
So that was not a concern for staff though.
Other questions for staff? I know I have some, but I'm not entirely sure where they're at yet, so I think I'm gonna come back after. The uh public hearing portion. So with that, this is now the public hearing portion of. This agenda item for the Copper Meadows General Plan Amendment, Rezone a Master Development Agreement Plan. I want to reiterate a few things that Taylor uh indicated, uh and. That first part is that this is a. Recommendation from the planning commission to the city council, so regardless of what the planning commission says, the city council is then going to hear this at a later date. That's probably enough from that standpoint, so when it comes to, to, to the public comment, there's a lot of people here and I appreciate that. It's uh recommended or we, we would request that everybody have an opportunity to be heard. But if we're starting to hear the same comment over, just recognize that we've heard it. Also, since there's so many of you, if you have designated one or two people maybe to, to represent a larger group, that would also be fantastic. So, uh, larger group, uh, just when you stand up, say your name, uh, the group that you're representing. And then you'll have five minutes to speak, if it's individual, let us know your name and then you'll have three minutes. If you're online, you can raise your hand and we'll call on you, typically we do the online first and then move to the in person. And uh we'll proceed through that process, oh, sorry, one more thing, it's a public comment, not public. Uh, discussion unfortunately, so we will not respond directly to any comments that are made in the moment. We'll be taking notes throughout, staff takes notes, I've worked with Taylor now for, how long you been with the city? Year and a half, uh, Taylor does a fantastic job of writing down all of the comments and then we go back after the fact, he responds to each. So. We'll uh go first to the online, are we seeing anybody online with their hands raised? Okay, no hands raised online, we'll come back to the online at the end then, but we'll open it up to the folks that are here. So, uh, it's already on, feel free to come up. Uh, I do not recommend forming a line, but if you want to, let's go down that direction.
Please state your name for the record also.
Okay. Uh, Jake McNinch, I'm a city of, uh, or I'm a resident of West Jordan City. Thank you, planning commission for being here tonight and I appreciate the staff report that has really delved into this development and. Uh, recommended a denial of this proposal. Um, tonight I would like to hand deliver a petition in opposition to the Copper Meadows development by Peterson Homes. This petition has five hundred and eighty eight constituents from West Jordan against the development. We feel that it would have an adverse effect on the surrounding neighborhoods. And is not compatible with the existing established neighborhoods, you can find the details of the petition on page number two. Please allow the people to present their factual evidence in opposition to this proposal. We have a very organized and factual uh uh approach to voice our opposition tonight. Um, I'd like to ask for a suspension of the rules as we have an assigned order. Uh, if you'd like an order, I have a list of those going by number that you can call on. Uh, it might make things a little bit uh more speedy, I guess. So if, if you're not opposed to suspending those rules uh until we exhaust that list. There are nineteen people that do have uh things to say in order. And then after that, there are, as you can see, a lot more people that want to voice their opposition. With that, I will hand deliver this petition, uh, and.
So hand it to Scott here.
Um, and then if you want a list of just, it's just in order, if I can call him up, how do you want to do that?
I don't recommend that you follow that protocol, it seems to be in violation of your bylaws, I think you ought to follow your normal rules.
So that's the direction.
You could make a motion to suspend the rules, but I don't recommend it under the circumstances.
What I'm gonna recommend is that those nineteen individuals, if you do want them. The hope is that the nineteen, twenty of you would be able to do one five minute comment. Uh, if you want to do individual three minute comments, let's have those nineteen individuals line up behind you. And that way they, they just start running through, but I have to open it up to everybody, so anybody that wants to be able to make a comment in between those nineteen. You're welcome to jump in.
And, and they don't have to be in that particular order, just, you know, okay?
Great.
And that way.
Thank you.
So most of us, so most of us will just have a short thing to read, but some of us will probably have additional comments, I assume. Uh, anyway, Rob Pet, uh, I'm in the Sycamores, West Jordan. I'll go ahead and start for time uh constraints, but so the applicant is proposing to rezone approximately seventy six. Uh, acres to the planned community zone. Um, West Jordan code, as was previously stated, um thirteen dash five C dash five. States the minimum size of a planned community zone shall be two hundred acres, undeveloped acres. Uh, except that the city council may approve a rezone request. Uh, to the plant community zone classification for a parcel smaller than two hundred acres if the city council. In a sole discretion determines that the surroundings uh neighborhood will not be adversely affected uh by the granting of such zone. Uh, classification and that the provisions of this article will be complied with, so, and I would argue. Since I'm in the, the uh Sycamores, it would be adversely affected for sure. Another comment of mine would be, I would like to see more schools before we try to cram more people up there, I know. My kids go to three different schools, Copper Hills and Sunset and they're. At the brink already, so. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, my name is Josh Schreiber, I'm also a resident of the Sycamores, I live just three doors away from this development. Uh, I want to talk on the code that Rob just mentioned, uh, this is code thirteen dash five C dash five. Which uh two aspects of this development impact that negatively. So first, the development has to have two hundred undeveloped acres in order to be uh classified as a planned community. Um, it actually only has seventy six, so less than, less than half of that. Um, this is right out of the gate, a direct violation of the code. The second part is that the city council only approve this if it will not adversely affect uh the surrounding neighborhood by granting this zone. And I'll remind you that we've just handed you five hundred and eighty eight signatures uh from people that surround the development. Explicitly saying that this will adversely affect uh their neighborhood. Now, we're gonna prove with facts that this will adversely affect our community and neighborhoods uh that surround this area, thank you.
Ashley Rains, I live in Hyde, which is just east of the proposed development. Um. Sorry, I rewrote because I'm a teacher and there was some grammar issues. I apologize. I get it. Um, but the Copper Meadows as proposed is simply not compatible with the Jordan Hills neighborhood or the Upper Sycamores. Your staff report reviewed the thirty one point seven, I'm sorry. The thirty one point seven acres of the Sycamores that are directly adjacent to the proposal to the north. There are seventy one dwelling units in the Sycamores with a density of two point two four dwelling units per acres compared to the four point nine being proposed. Peterson repeatedly said that four point nine falls under low density designation. However, that phrase means something very different when you look at it like this. The average lot on the Sycamores is point three five acres or fifteen thousand square feet. Compared to the largest lot on Peterson's proposal being point one eight acres or about eight thousand square feet. We are asking you to trust your own staff and the report that they provided you with. That shows this proposal is not compatible with the existing neighborhoods, thank you.
I'm Cassie Jones, I also live in Hyde Point directly east of Copper Meadows. Um, not only is Copper Meadows not compatible with the neighborhoods directly to the north. But the neighborhoods, uh, Jordan Hills neighborhood, neighborhood has much larger lots and follows a traditional pattern of development. Within West Jordan that places large lots along the west boundary. And as we have learned from the staff report, you all have heard of a large number of residents in the neighborhood that feel this proposal will have a negative impact on the neighborhood. You also have petitions signed by five hundred and eighty eight constituents agreeing this will adversely impact surrounding neighborhoods. We asked the developer to take the recommendation of West Jordan City Planning Commission. And rethink the development utilizing density and build environments, environment types similar to the Sycamores north of the gravel pit, thank you.
My name is Sam Sweet, resident of the Sycamores. So a couple of meadows is also not compatible with Hyde Point neighborhood which directly buffers to the east. The staff report did not include this data, however. We would like to present the facts to prove that Copper Meadows is not compatible with Hyde Point. Hyde Point neighborhood is made up of a hundred and seventy two dwelling units with a density of point, or three point one two. Units per acre and the lots ranging from point one eight acres to point four one acres. At an average lot size of point two two acres, Copper Meadows. Is proposing four point nine dwelling units per acre, which would not even be close to compatible. With Hyde Point and dwelling units per acre or average lot size. We'd ask that your staff agree with this analysis, which would make this not compatible with the land to the west.
Hi, I'm Christine Kidd, I live right next to the uh proposed parking lot. Off of the top of eighty two south. But before I get into that, I'm gonna just uh read this. Copper Meadows is not compatible with what Jones Ranch is proposing along the Ocker Mountains. Please let us use fact found in the Jones Ranch master plant, master development plan and your staff report. Joan Ranch, which buffers on the south side directly adjacent to the project, has the following entitlements. Village ten, which is twenty five acres is designated as low density, which allows for between one point five and two point nine dwelling unit. Units per acre, if you continue south to villages eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Of the Jones Ranch development, which all buffer the Ocker Mountain directly, allow no more than three units per acre. As defined here, Jones Ranch would have no more than three dwelling units per acre. That type of housing would buffer the Ocker Mountains all the way from ninety south over until you get to Copper. Meadows, which is proposing five units per acre that buffer the mountains, this is twice as dense. And is not compatible with what Jones Ranch was proposing. If Ivory were to develop this land, wouldn't you think they would match what they have done all the way from ninety south? Up against the Ocker Mountains, why is Peterson Home not being held to the same standard that Ivory has set? We ask that the planning commission require housing up against. The mountains to be one to three units as defined in Jones Ranch Plan. We know conclude, we now conclude that Copper Meadows is not compatible with Jordan Hills to the north. Hyde Point to east and Jones Ranch to the south, using only factual data. I actually agree with all of this, but I also have high concerns with the parking lot at the top of eighty two south. I've lived up here for eleven years and we've had to continue. Crime, parking, I've seen everything that you can imagine up into that, I've called the cops. Many times and just putting grass and actual parking, it's just gonna continue that, the safety of the corner of Cricket and eighty two south. Is very dangerous, yes, there's a stop sign, but the continued roundabout of people going. Entirely fast is not safe and it's just a parking lot now for people to just go hike up into the mountains. To do whatever they do, so. I propose that that parking lot be uh changed as well, thank you.
My name is Mike Mildenhall, I'm a resident of the Sycamores, uh, I appreciate the planning commission uh in your service and as well as the staff. I will say that you have restored my confidence in local government, so I take back all of the negative things I've ever said about all of you. Uh, we'll now prove with facts that Copper Meadows is not in harmony with the great land or with the general land use map. And many of the guiding principles in West, in the West Jordan General Plan. Please let us begin by reminding you of the guiding principles in the West Jordan General, General Plan applied to this development first. Land use decisions should be guided by the general plan to protect his existing land uses and minimize impacts to existing neighborhoods. Second, the general plan is the will of the community and presumed correct. Three, land use designs must promote quality of life, safety and good urban design. Fourth, plan, uh, or excuse me, place high density projects near infrastructure which exist to sustain the increased density. And lastly, protect, preserve and restore hillsides, ridge lines and foothills of the Ocker Mountains along, and along the Jordan River. Uh, one other comment is, as I'm looking at the conceptual master plan, I hope. You have a good snow plan removal, if you have not been up in that area during the winter, we will get four to five foot snowdrifts. Uh, your people will not be able to get their cars out of some of those parking lots, so I appreciate your time.
I'm uh Blake Williams, I'm a resident of Sycamores, uh, the Sycamores neighborhood. And appreciate the opportunity to, to address you, uh, to continue those points. Uh, on page seven of a hundred and sixty seven of Peterson's Homes MDA, it states. We are proposing to relocate soil from one or from this site to fill the quarry. To a developable, developable and safe uh um compaction level and slope. This proposal from the developer goes against the spirit of the objective to preserve and restore. Hillside, ridge lines and foothills of the Ocker Mountains. Found in the, the guiding principles in the general plan, please accept this factual information. And realize this is in direct opposition of what the West Jordan guideline, guiding principles are. And, and on a personal note, you know, it, it always creates concern to me. When we say the best way to solve a problem is to further compound the problem, uh, you know, to hear that. To solve school issues that we're already experiencing, well, let's compound it. And then maybe seven or eight years down the road, we'll have a school that our kids or, or grandkids uh can, can go to. Um, I'm, I'm a fan of identifying the problem, I'm a fan of planning ahead and uh I, I hope that that's the approach we take here.
My name is Brian Shepherd, I've been a resident of West Jordan for twenty one years now, I recently purchased a home in the Sycamores neighborhood. Uh, my backyard backs up to eighty two hundred south, which is adjacent to the proposal. And would be directly impacted by the impeding parking lot. That Mrs. Kidd has talked about and potentially, and if you don't believe me, just go seventy eight south, just east of. Uh, back this highway and you'll see parking lot from that neighborhood out on this, on the main road and that would be the same thing. With eighty two hundred south with this proposal, so that would, that would attract crime right into my backyard. Which uh would be super unfortunate, I paid a premium to live in this neighborhood. And when I bought my home, I, I was told what the property was zoned for in this area and so I would hope that it would stay that way. In the West Jordan Planning Guide for the city, it talks about how good urban design can facilitate social health. Copper Meadows proposed development does not facilitate social health. There are no amenities for social health other than a trail with weeds around it and garbage surrounding it. Just look at Hyde Point neighborhood directly to, to. Just look at Hyde Point neighborhood directly to the east. It has a trail with weeds and garbage that has become a liability rather than an amenity. Gatherings such as barbecues in backyards or community events will not be possible with what they have recommended for setbacks on rear yards. They are proposed, proposing five foot on alley-loaded townhomes and three-foot feet on single-family home clustered homes. The minimum bulk development standards in the PC zone call for a minimum of twenty-two foot setback on the rear yard, which we would then ask you to agree with your staff report and do not allow minimum setbacks to be changed so that we can sustain social health in our neighborhoods. Also, rear setbacks of five feet do not allow for culinary main lines or sanitary sewer lines to be located in alleyways. It should be clarified in the cottage lot side yard setbacks that the five-foot and eight-foot alternating setbacks, thirteen feet combined, is required both on a lot and adjacent lots. Thank you for your time.
I'm Dan Pope and I'm, live in the Sycamores, have been for eight years. Love living here and I agree that we have five-foot snowdrifts sometimes. I'm a meteorologist, so I can say that. On a more serious note, page thirty, thirty-seven, the West Jordan General Planning Guide talks about urban design. The Copper Meadows proposal doesn't follow this good urban design in many aspects. So the definition of urban design is process that is implemented by cities and towns to develop a relationship between people and their physical environment with a goal that the municipality being both functional and aesthetically pleasing. So we just don't see that happening. I'm also concerned about moving dirt to where dirt is in the landfill or where the pit is. My home, and I knew this ahead of time, was built a little bit on where they pushed dirt from the upper side of Sycamores down and fill in an area. Now, I did build on, the founding, foundation was in virgin soil, but what I found is that that four or five feet above virgin soil has been sinking and I've had to bring in the people to bring my curbs up and bring my driveway up. I've had to have them fill in concrete below, so I'm not certain that we're able to, I don't think you can, I think that it has to be built on virgin soil or you're gonna have problems with, with issues with homes sliding. I'm also very concerned about the huge development to the north that's already been agreed on, this woods project. That's seven hundred acres, three thousand seventy-eight homes. It's the beginning of what's going to be if all of these other developments pan out. We're gonna see an awful lot of growth and we have to be very careful with that growth. And I, I suggest we not approve this development as it is now.
I'm Christian Crook. I've lived in the Sycamores and now in Hyde Point for fourteen years or something like that. And I'm also opposed to changing the zoning here in this plan. So the proposed Copper Meadows development does not constitute an overall improvement in the adopted general land use map. The land used being sized maximally productive for the developer in the MDA, it shows on their grade map, the land they will be leaving us is mostly fifteen to thirty percent grades. In fact, they say they will take off the grades to meet the less than thirty percent grades requirement. This does not benefit the community in any way and this is not usable land and solely benefits the developer. The land used proposed is not maximally productive for the city either unless the city's goal is to just garner as many utility hookup fees as possible. The potential of the land is a nice bench, is that it has a nice, it's a nice bench area with views of the mountains on both sides of the valley. And its potential is much higher than just a very, very dense project that will diminish the value of the homes around it. And if you want a case study of what'll happen, look no further than the Greck Hughes Development on the southwest corner of seventy-eight hundred South and U-111, which is similar to this proposal. Thank you.
My name is Rich Willey. I'm going to be here in two capacities today, so I hope you can afford me just a little bit extra time if I need it. First, in my individual capacity is as a resident of Hyde Point and second, as representing the Hyde Point HOA Board. So first, in the West Jordan Planning Guide for the city, it talks about how good urban design can facilitate social opportunity. So social opportunity means that residents have equal access to transportation, protections from hazards and that mixed-use developments be placed near public transit facilities. Copper Meadows development does not follow good urban design in regards to social opportunity. Good urban design and planning require that, that density become less dense as you get further away from the nodes of major arterial, arterial roads. West Jordan City has high density against U-111, which follows this design to allow high density, high density in the location proposed would go against the general plan and good planning practices that does not support social opportunity as major artillery or arterial roads and nodes are far away. The nearest, for example, the nearest bus stop is fifty minutes away by walking. Copper Meadows also does not facilitate social opportunity as it provides hazard rather than protections from hazard, leaving twenty-plus acres in open, long-term drought creates hazard for surrounding homes, fire hazards. And we ask that you sustain local opportunity by, by not recommending this proposal for this location, rather we propose that you recommend this in a location that is closer in proximity to the main roads and near public transportation. Now, from the standpoint of, of the HOA, Hyde Point HOA Board, we've got some serious concerns about the water, water collection plan on this. It's not fully developed in the, in the plan that's been presented here. And in fact, the, the water storm drain plan, it appears to be diverting some of the storm drain water into our neighborhood and into our collection pond, which is already overflowing. This, this past spring, we, we had massive flooding in our collection pond and damage to our, our park there, which the HOA is trying to repair. So we've got serious concerns there. A couple other points that I want to point out on this conceptual master plan. This is being presented as a, as a low-density area, but if you look in that, in the upper left-hand corner, that is a railroad track and it is fenced off from the rest of the development. So I don't think that should be counted as, as part of that. And I think once you take that out, it becomes medium density. And, and with that, I'll, I'll move on.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you, planning commission for allowing us to be here today and present our, present our prepared facts. Thank you for, thank you Peterson Homes for all the work that you've done in West Jordan. We appreciate it, but this, we are in opposition to this particular development. In the West Jordan Planning Guide for the city, it talks about, oh, my name is Jared Hodgkin. I'm also on the HOA Board of the Hyde Point Neighborhood. In the West Jordan Planning Guide for the city, it talks about neighborhood character. This focus on details of urban form and buildings on the basic framework and structure and goes beyond creates, to create places that are special, memorable, enjoyable, livable and attractive. Copper Meadows proposal is special only in the fact that it's compatible with any, that it isn't compatible with anything existing that is built around it. It is enjoyable and attractive only if you like walking garbage-ridden trails with noxious weeds that are mowed twice a year. Memorable only if you can't remember even ever being able to host a party in your backyard due to proposed three to five-foot rear yard setbacks. We ask that you do not recommend this proposal as it does not follow the outlined plan guide, planning guide for the neighborhood character in West Jordan. I'd also like to point out that in my previous neighborhood in Glenmore in South Jordan, they, it was a master plan community that fell into disarray among several different developers. One of the side effects was the private alleyways between homes were left abandoned and it created a real nasty mess for the neighborhood and there were weeds everywhere, including several times burglars would get away through those alleyways and there was a fire risk. Couple of the homes did have fires because of smoking in the alleyway behind their homes. The, I want to reiterate the water issue that we're afraid of in the Hyde Point neighborhood and this plan does not, if that's a proposed retention pond, it's very much not sufficient. So I appreciate your time and also that, that grade through the middle there will, will turn into a whole bunch of weeds and the slope is so, so drastic, it would look like a trail similar to those that we've, we've seen in other developments throughout West and South Jordan that are almost never utilized simply because they're always overgrown and they're always covered in trash. Thank you.
My name is Isabel Vittolson and I've been a resident of the Sycamores for the past five years. From the general city plan under residential land use, it states that higher density such as apartments, townhomes and carriage homes should be limited to those areas that are adjacent to higher intensity land uses and nodes along high-volume traffic corridors and within or near transit-oriented developments where they can more easily be designed to buffer the impacts of these more intense land uses. In those areas where the general plan recommends such developments, multifamily residential development should be compatible with the surrounding areas, not negatively impact neighboring residential areas and conform to strict design and buffering criteria established for such developments. Copper Meadows does not meet this requirement as it would negatively affect the neighborhoods around it. It is not adjacent to higher intensity land uses and the nodes. And as you've heard, we've proved the factual information that Copper Hills or Copper Meadows is not compatible with surrounding areas. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Richard Hickson. I live in the Hyde Point Development just to the east. I can also attest to the, to the rain issues, having swum several laps in that same pool when it rains. I just want to call out, so the land map currently shows twenty-three point six acres as park, general land map shows twenty-two point five nine acres of very low residential and another twenty-two point five nine acres of very low, very low residential. Copper Meadows is proposing four point nine dwelling units per acre. We, the people, conclude that from this factual information, the Copper Meadows is not compatible with the general land use map and that they are asking for an unreasonable land map use change, going from very low resident, going from very low residential to basically the low end of medium density. We think that there's, they are asking for a significant amount of change and that it should be deemed not, is not compatible as it changes the land use map too much. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ross Wilcox, also a resident of the Sycamores neighborhood. I've also lived in West Jordan for approximately twenty years, previously having lived in the Oaks neighborhood and then moving up into the Sycamores about nine years ago. And we love that area. We love where we're at and we love the surrounding area and how it's built out and that's kind of why, why we are there, to have that benefit. And I don't feel like this new development plan complies with what has initially been planned for that area and the, the general feeling of how that neighborhood should have been planned out. But I kind of want to mirror things that we've talked about in our discussions as concerned neighbors and kind of mirroring what the staff had discussed is that we can conclude now that we presented some factual data that directly from the West Jordan guiding principles, that Copper Meadows' proposed development does not comply with many of the guiding principles as enumerated earlier by staff and largely fails to meet or advance many guiding principles of the general plan and in several occasions seems to be opposed to the guiding principles of the West Jordan general plan. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Casey Doll. I'm a resident of the Hyde Point neighborhood. I have a two-part presentation, one prepared and one freestyle. The prepared portion, the current future land use map anticipates a relatively low number of units for this property. As a result, current utility master plans and infrastructure have not been sized to service the number of units proposed in this development or the proposed amended future land use map. The total number of ERU, equivalent residential units allocated to the Copper Meadows property is one hundred twenty-three. It's important to understand that the number of ERUs available to a project does not necessarily mean there is utility capacity for that many residential units as open space and non-residential uses also utilize the utility capacity. And the number of ERUs that a given unit needs also vary based on the size of the lot, home and type of development. Copper Meadows is proposing three hundred eighty-one ERUs. This is three times the amount anticipated by the city. Focus Engineering states the sewer pipe needs to be updated to twenty-one inch pipe for adequate drainage and they are proposing that the taxpayer pay for this. This should be paid for by the developer if they want to develop the land, not the people who oppose it. And now my freestyle. I'm, I'm very concerned about the traffic. A quick Google search shows the average home in Utah has two point five vehicles per residence. If three hundred and eighty, whatever units are approved in this area, that's nine hundred and fifty-two additional vehicles going down that road, going through Hyde Point, going through the Sycamores every day and beyond just the simple matter of convenience and the headache and the additional traffic that will cause people going down our streets. I'm more concerned about the safety of the children going to Sunset Bridge Middle School. I have a daughter that attends that school and we get emails fairly regularly about students running across U-111 instead of using the Skybridge with a thousand additional cars going through that intersection every morning. I'm extremely concerned about the safety of the children. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Cox. I'm a resident of Hyde Point. We moved here about five years ago with the purpose of getting to a space where we could have some land and spread out a little bit. So Copper Meadows is proposing outlandish setbacks. The following are all in contrary to West Jordan's normal standard plan community setbacks. The standard setback in a PC zone in West Jordan is twenty-two feet for the front yard. Copper Meadows is proposing ten feet for a single-family cluster and twelve feet for alley-loaded townhomes. The standard setback for a PC in West Jordan is twenty-two feet in the rear yard. Copper Meadows is proposing three feet on a single cluster home, three feet. And on townhomes, five-feet rear yard setbacks. This wouldn't even allow for culinary main lines or sanitary sewer lines to be located in alleyways. The standard setback in a PC zone in West Jordan is fifteen feet on the corner side setback. Copper Meadows is proposing five feet on single-family clusters. Please do not allow the developer to change setbacks so they can fit more houses. Standard setbacks are in place for a reason. The city code that states PC zones are for two hundred underdeveloped acres is also in place for a reason. This development is proposing to break city code and change setbacks. Please do not allow this.
My name is Greg Kitchen. I've been a resident of the Sycamores for the past eighteen years. Mr. Peterson mentioned the comments today by, by Governor Cox on the need for more affordable housing in Utah. At the end of this school year, I'll have three high school graduates who will be living in my basement, so I can assure you, no one is more interested in affordable housing, responsible, affordable, family-friendly housing than I am. With that, the traffic, the traffic study done by the developer stated that this development was going to increase the number of visits from fifty-six to over three thousand. The conclusion the developer drew with this data is that there would be very little impact to the traffic in this area. There's run, one road in from U-111 and one road out from U-111 to this community. Going from fifty-six visits to over three thousand sounds like a very large traffic impact to me. I'm no, I'm not a traffic engineer, but that seems pretty obvious. With this, I think we can safely conclude that the road infrastructure in this area is not equipped or capable to handle the, this type of development. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Hardy. I'm a seventeen-year resident of the Sycamores. I just want to bring to all of our remembrance and recollection some principles from the general plan that was just passed on July sixth of this year. Quoting from the general plan, it says, "Adopting the two thousand twenty-three general plan and amended future land map use as the comprehensive and long-range plan for the city of West Jordan, not a five-month plan from July," and then let's change it five months later. Section fifty-five of the general plan under land use guiding principles says, "Land use decisions should be guided by the general plan to protect existing land uses and minimize impacts to existing neighborhoods." The general plan was revised and recommended by a six-zero vote unanimously by the planning commission and then ratified by the city council. So I know you are well-versed in the city plan. The general plan is the will of the community and presumed current. Developers have the burden of proof on why the general plan should be changed. Section seventy-two, housing guiding principles, placing higher-density projects near infrastructure where, which exist to sustain the increased density. Section twelve- Section twelve, social health and opportunity locating higher density residential near public transit facilities. There are still twenty five percent of the West Jordan's undeveloped land that are still. Of the undeveloped land, twenty five percent is still ready for development. And this type of zoning uh in a higher density can be placed in any number of those other twenty five percent that's more consistent with the surrounding neighborhood zoning. Section twenty four of the general plan, growth management. Part of the growth strategy recognizes the need to place the balance of preservation of established neighborhoods. Section twenty six, growth management strategies. Regulatory standards such as zoning controls the location, type and density and timing of development and is a common tool used by communities to manage growth. Section forty four, one of the primary goals of this general plan is to continue to encourage new development that is integrated with existing development. And to make the most efficient use of existing infrastructure to be consistent with existing developments. In two thousand twenty one, West Jordan did a survey. And concluded that fifty seven or fifty three percent of the respondents indicated that there is too much potential for high density development. If I can just show this map really quick and take a few seconds, this simply indicates one of the challenges. For the section of the Sycamores that is zoned very low density, there's around seventy homes in the uppermost section, the western section of the Sycamores. Very low density is the zoning. And when my neighbors sell their homes, the challenge is appraisers follow the guidelines of taking comparable sales within a mile radius. The first uh darker circle indicates a mile out. And I was trying to find the next very low density housing neighborhood within a mile. And the copper meadows development is is that. But if we change the zoning, that goes away. If we go out two miles, there's still no, there aren't, there doesn't exist any other very low density neighborhoods. So if you agree to change the zoning, you were leaving the seventy residents. And by the way, I don't even live in that section. But I'm looking out for the interest of my neighbors that do. Seventy of them are left alone to have only seventy other homes. That will be their comparable sales and no other neighborhoods that are consistent with a typical typical zoning or similar zoning. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. Uh, you've heard a lot of facts. Mine's going to be more of an emotional. Um. Uh, sorry, my name's Eldon Reed and I live in Sycamores. Uh, my family's lived in West Jordan now for thirty years. Uh, first we uh were in a development at the ninetieth South Fortieth West area. Uh, at the time, we thought that was the edge of the earth. Uh, after twenty wonderful years there, more housing developments had popped up and we were once again in suburbia. Six years ago, we built our dream in this beautiful neighborhood that we now call home. Most of us have moved there to escape the crowds and noise of the city and to build a sanctuary of peace and quiet. We enjoy listening to the wind rustle the leaves and the trees and the birds singing in them. We enjoy walking the neighborhood concert conversing with our friends in the peace and quiet that we have come to relish. The far west side of West Jordan does not have the roadway to support it and we've heard several uh comments about that already. Uh, the hustle bustle of city life is encroaching on this sanctuary that we have spent time, energy and money to create. Big box stores are creeping in, retail warehouses and stores are popping up even closer. And this has already brought more trucks, vans and cars than our roads can handle. More large developments are already being built, scarring the greenscape that we have moved to embrace and driving the wildlife away that we used to see every day. Now, we understand that, you know, more and more people are moving to our beautiful state and city because of what the citizens of West Jordan already embrace. But this, uh, but if this becomes suburbia again, we can't move any further west unless we jump a fence. Grab our pick and shovel and move some copper to dig our basement. We plead with you to keep the current zoning and planning in place, to keep our beautiful neighborhoods intact with the peaceful tranquility we have grown to love. Don't shatter our dreams that we have put so much sweat and sometimes tears into building just so a developer can make a few extra dollars. There are plenty of other areas, even potentially in West Jordan as we've heard. But uh more likely in Harriman or South Jordan where high density housing already exists. Where there's four lane roads that are already in place and where there's more efficient and closer to needed retail and public transportation suited to the needs of a denser population. Please listen to us as citizens of this beautiful city, who you work for. Mayor Burton, a close friend for over twenty years, has brought a good mix of retail and residential to the city and has built a wonderful area to raise our families. Don't let this developer who doesn't even live in this area dictate what you should or shouldn't do. Don't let this developer shatter the dreams that we as citizens have built and destroy the beauty and tranquility that we have worked so hard to build just so they can make some extra profit. We live here. We pay our taxes here. We shop here. We raise our families here. Please respect our wishes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nathan Voorhees. Um, and I live in Hyde Point. Uh, I'm a little bit concerned about a lot of things, but I just want to talk on one thing in particular. Uh, the fact that we're using a master planned community in this case seems to me to be more. For the reason that we have the remediation than for the actual reason of having master planned community. The whole purpose of master plan community is that you can. Build around everything and make it so it's a livable place. The purpose of this master plan community is literally just to make it so that we can have slopes where those green spaces are. And that we can move less dirt and we can make it cost less. And while I I appreciate that, as someone who loves business, I appreciate that fact, but that's what it's for. It's not for the parks, it's not for the the it's it's so it's cheaper to move things and I don't think that should ever be a reason why the city does that. And if we move to even a a non um master plan, but just a low, a a medium density. Type environment, whatever it would be on that front, we would see the the lots being larger, we would see places like they couldn't build still because of cost of move too much. But we would see something more in line with what I think the whole community would want to see. And so I I would vote um and appeal to you that you remove the fact that it's master plan community and. See how you can do it then because that is literally in this case being used. To save money, not to fulfill the purpose of the West Jordan city. Um, and that's the one piece that I'd like to share and especially with those slopes and whatnot, the amount they're going to fill in. It makes me leery even more of what what that's that's being used for. And I love master plan communities. I go out to daybreak. I love how they they are. But there's not land that's just garbage land so that you can build houses and that's what a lot of this feels like. So that is my comments.
Hi, everybody. Um, thank you. I used to be a West Jordan City Planning Commissioner, so. Josh Zokowski, yep. Um, so I can appreciate you guys sitting here and listening to all of our comments tonight and and I really just appreciate it. I appreciate everybody coming out. Um, I'm really grateful. Um. The the one thing that I wanted to bring up, because it's all, it's all pretty much been said, but one of the, one of the provisions in changing land use has to always be, is it for the best use of the community? Is it for the best use of the developer? Is that for the best use of the city, right? And so my, I am, I just want to state that I'm not opposed to density, but I'm I'm opposed to poorly used density, right? So this plan, um, unfortunately, I think it's poorly used density. The land that they're giving us for the open space is all really unbuildable land. It's twenty percent slopes, right? That trail with all the weed garden on it is going to be twenty percent slopes or around that fifteen percent slopes. What can my kids do with that? Nothing. Uh, the parks, they're they're all on slopes except for the two tiny little parks down there by by the townhomes. Again, nothing opposed to density. Um, but but the the space that's given is not usable. So that tells me that the developer is using all of the space of the land that they're donating to us as open space. To just get rid of the portions that they can't mitigate. And if they can't mitigate it and it's not going to make them money, they're cramming it into the other spaces. Um, and by doing so, a PC zone's great because you can kind of play with it. And if you look at the area that you can develop that's outside of that seven or or outside of the uh high slopes. It ends up being more of a density along the lines of seven point six two homes per acre. So it even compacts. They're taking the whole acreage and dividing that across. So it's it's great statistics. But it it doesn't really work for uh a nice livable community. Um, last thing is, um. The the, when I was on the planning commission, the whole reason why we changed all of the code on the setbacks. Was because of the Sycamores development right to the north of it. You can't get snowplows down there. You can't park a uh F one fifty truck in the driveway without hanging over the sidewalk like. All of these things are big problems and I I can just see it revisited here. So. Um, again, not opposed to density, but it's got to be a good plan. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kerry Bogger. I live in the Sycamores too. Been up there for seventeen, eighteen years. Uh, but I grew up. In Kearns and watched this whole area grow up. It's all my life, seventy years. So when there was nothing here. So I understand that really the only land we real. Big land use left to develop is here in the southwest valley. Uh, that's all there is. And I understand why the uh developers want to do it. And but but I also understand what I grew up with and what my children grew up with. What makes for a good community, a good home to grow up in. Uh, I I see these pod houses that they 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 make. Sure, you can cram a lot of people in there. But what does it do to a family? Where do the kids play? They say the parks? Well, no kid goes over to those little neighborhood parks without a parent there to watch them. And if you drive by them in the summer times, they're not that busy because parents don't have time to sit at a park and watch them. So where do the children play? In this type of a community? Well, you pushed them out onto the streets because there isn't any yard. These are, these are really good. You make a lot of money. I understand why the developer wants to uh wants to. Put as many in there. It's it's about money and it it really is. But is it, but see, I have to fall on the side of a family. What's good for the family, a community? Is this really good? This is this the type of place you would want to raise your family with when they were there? With no yard, no nothing for them to do? You, so you see, it it's more than just a home. It's got to be someplace where children can grow up. And that's where I I'll always fall on. I've I've listened to all the facts of everybody here and stuff and they're good. They all have good. I understand the developer wants to make you make money and that's his, that's his job. And 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 so I do understand that. But when it comes right down to it, I always have to say, and this is not just about this development, this is everyone in West Jordan. Every development, what is best for our family? Where do they grow up? Because they're going to have to live there and live with that community for a long time. It isn't just make your money and leave. It's a long time process for them. So I hope you'll consider that. We're counting on you. To make the decisions, make good decisions. So because they impact us, that's what you're here for. So make good decisions so that we all are happy. That's all I have to say.
Go ahead. Since I'm close here, um, I'm Josh Okusen. Um. I am a resident of the Sycamores as well. So, um, and like it's been said several times when we we moved up there to have space. If I could move to Camas, I would, but I have to work. Um, but um, we really enjoy it there. Um, we enjoy the. The space, we enjoy, you know, being able to get out and and walk around, but I I have nothing bad to say about Peterson. I'm an electrical engineer. I've been doing multifamily housing for the last five years. Um, that's all I've been doing. I've been making money off of that forever, just building houses and I I totally understand the business. Um, the one thing I really appreciate and that I have actually learned here in West Jordan is that um, that this is my city. And I've really appreciated the the opportunities that we've had as a community to really stand up um for the prison, for. For other issues that we've had in the city and I really appreciate that the time that we have and the way that the government functions that that we can be heard. Um, couple of, couple of concerns that I have and some of these have been said, but um, I want to, I want to just reiterate as far as these little. This this is really just a math problem. I mean, I'm an engineer. I can make a spreadsheet and I can get your density down to that. If you look at that and tell me that's low density housing, um, I'll I'll sell you something, you know, just let me know, but uh. Throw throw on a bunch of weeds and and things like that around and then getting the density down to the to the limits. I mean, it's it's obvious that that's not, I mean, that's probably high density if you look at that center part right there. And um, those four houses that are stacked together, I guarantee there will be eight cars out on that road because we've seen it. We've seen it um, the on seventy eight hundred south, the eighty two hundred south will be a parking lot. Um, because of the the way that um, this multifamily and high density housing is is functioning. So. Um, you want to look at even that little neighborhood down to the to the east of of us, the smaller Sycamores area. Um, I see posts all the time about get your cars off the road. Nobody uses their garage anymore. I I have this small two car garage in the middle neighborhood. And I use mine. Um, a lot of people have threes and there's one car in there. Um, but we managed to keep our road, our our cars in the driveway so that people can use the roads for what they're for, so that the people, kids aren't getting killed running across the street. Um, cha-chasing a ball or things like that. Um, I'm really concerned just as a, as a citizen of West Jordan about the open land and how we are are using that. Um, we're, we're wasting that opportunity because of the demands that uh. That, you know, high, high housing um demands are are at that point. Um, it's been said that, you know, the infrastructure here is not built for that. There there's one road out. I know we've heard they're all state roads and there's nothing we can do about it. There is stuff we can do about it and um, and and we need to keep that in mind. The infrastructure is built to be downtown. That's why Salt Lake's down there. That's why there's parking every little slot all the way down downtown. That's where all the multifamily is going. That's where master developments are meant to be. Um, where where people can take advantage of all those amenities in that space. So, thanks. Thank you.
Good evening. I appreciate you guys taking the time to hear all these comments and you probably thought he was the last one and then I got him, you're like, oh crap. So I I do appreciate your willingness to be here tonight and and to hear all of our concerns. Uh, one thing I did want to touch on a little bit more on. Excuse me, Jonathan Jacks, I'm the resident of the Sycamores. I appreciate that. Apologies. Um. This plan right here is a recipe for crime. I don't have the numbers, but I can speak from experience where I live. There's a good sized park. And there's comments been made that, you know, kids probably won't use this park. Well, guess who will? You know, thieves will use this park. Uh, there's a lot of theft that goes on in our neighborhood and they use these parks as central locations to pack up their stuff and get away. I've seen arrests happens in the park behind my house multiple times. And guess who's there at two or three o'clock in the morning? Kids doing stuff that they shouldn't be doing. And I've called West Jordan PD multiple times and this isn't anything against them. But they're so far away that the response times just are not acceptable or they just don't come. And packing that many people into those parks into that kind of parking environment is just going to compound the issue. And that's not going to solve the problems that we have by compounding them. Um, another comment that I'll make and and I'll end. Um. You know, adding the the traffic and the cars, Sunset Middle School. Is right across the street. There are thousands of kids and cars and families that either walk there, drive there every single day. U one eleven from that point forward is one lane each way. I'd like to remind you that we've got Amazon right up the street with all those trucks. You want to pound that many number of residents into that small area with all that traffic going one lane. You're going to have problems not only with crime. But with kids' safety. And I thought that should be one of the the top priorities that we have here. Thank you.
Anybody online? If you are online, feel free to raise your hand. We'll call you. All right, last chance for folks here. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the planning commission for further discussion or emotion. I've been writing notes. Uh you folks have done your homework. I am gonna recommend if you have a teacher nearby, they're worth their weight in gold. Make sure that they proofread everything. It was fine. It read well. Um you also don't. You also don't pull any punches. Uh. So I wanna share, I. I've been on the planning commission for four years now and uh I have really come to trust our staff. Uh Taylor, uh I'm gonna point him out in particular. So a year and a half here uh has been impressive from day one. Uh he's always looking out for the best interest of the community uh and always paying attention to to these things. So as as we've done these kinds of. Uh presentations before and had this much public involvement, maybe not this much, but any amount of public involvement. Uh Taylor's been really good about taking down notes and I'd just like to turn the time over to him if that's alright with everyone here. And allow Taylor to address some of the comments that he's taken notes down on. Uh then we can ask questions of staff and then if anybody has questions for the uh applicant, I think it'd be appropriate to bring them back up and let them also. Uh provide a bit of rebuttal. So that's how we'll proceed. Now, before we do that, does anybody need a break or should we wait until after this agenda item? Alright, let's go for it. Taylor.
Alright, thank you Chair. Um so I did write down comments as I heard them. Anything that was specifically addressed in this?
So did you close the public hearing?
Uh the officially, the public hearing is not closed.
Yeah, and that puts you consistent with your rules because after the close of the public hearing, then it's the uh. Co- addressing the comments and so.
Sorry, I I thought I got that sentence in there, but I. Better safe than sorry.
Uh a take two. Um anything that I heard that was specifically addressed in the staff report, I'm not going to comment on. A lot of those came up. Um but a couple of things I took notes of, one, uh average density and height. Point three point one two dwelling units per acre, that is a low density development. Um so why the staff report said. Those would be consistent, they followed under the same density designation, so that was one thing. Um another thing that had quite a bit of comment on was the parking lot or trailhead at the end of eighty two hundred south. That was a staff recommendation to the applicant because the road dead ends there and it's never going to be continued through. There's a trail system that continues up into the foothills, so we thought that that would be a good, if this project came through, opportunity to have. Uh a program placed a park and go get into those foothills and hikes. So uh developer took some arrows from that. That was a staff recommendation, so. I did just wanna get that out. Um. There were some concerns brought up about drainage and uh storm drains and retention. I think the applicant would fully agree that those haven't been answered. We don't have those plans. Those are something we would typically look at after zoning entitlements are in place, so. A- as mentioned, this plan, if this was approved, would not develop like this. I think. We've already talked to them about some of those uh retention ponds. They need to be uh twenty feet separation from the roadway or any lot line. Uh from where the water storage is, so this plan would have to probably change pretty significantly to address some of those things, so. We don't have those plans, but that would have to be addressed if this were approved. We didn't really talk about it, but it was in the staff report. There is property that's outside of the city that is needed for. The density to be under five units per acre. They have an annexation petition in, but we would not process that unless the rezon was uh. Approved, just because it's a very cumbersome and difficult process. And if it's not going to be approved. Uh I think Duncan has three hundred other things that he can spend his time on. The future land use map, any changes to it? It is a living document and this is a land use decision, so this isn't necessarily a. Uh executive decision, which we normally get in front of the planning commission. It's it's a policy decision. So that's why you're making a recommendation to. The city council. And so what that means is. As long as the future land use plan shows where it shows, that's the guiding document, but if that changes. Then that change becomes the guiding document and that's up to the policymakers, which are the city council members, to really address if that's in. The best interest of the city or not. So the applicant or property owners has the right to ask for that change and it's. Um due process to have that heard before this body of the city council. We do have a traffic engineer on staff. He has reviewed the traffic study. He didn't pull up any concerns with. What the applicant's traffic study um did present. I know that was a concern that a few people brought up. Yeah, I think that's all of the comments I had that weren't addressed by the staff report.
Uh I'll just, I think you hit all of these as well. I just wanna reiterate, make sure I listen. Uh stormwater, I'm gonna throw geotechnical in there as well. Neither of those are prepared yet because. I I'm assuming the applicant's waiting to see if the zoning goes through before they put in that expenditure. One of the things I heard, uh just to mention it, is uh the proximity of bus stops as well as the expansion of U one eleven. Uh these kinds of developments are what encourage others to make the decisions to do those expansions, put those bus stops in place. So kind of an if you build it, they will come. Is that an appropriate thing to say?
It is, yeah. UTA doesn't like to put routes where there aren't people, so they want there to be riders before they build someone to them.
I think we hit the rest of what I had. I had three comments for staff or three questions. Future land use map, we talked a little bit about that. Yeah, maybe you can go back to it up here. So there are three different designations currently. Uh public facilities, parks and uh and low density residential, right?
Yes.
The the parks and the public facilities, we've already, is this a for sure determination? These are not anticipated. The this, the city is not going to go procure these parcels.
We have no plans to at this time.
So to that end. Help me out here on what I'm trying to say. Uh this is the process by which this is changed, right? Uh uh an applicant goes through a due process to submit an application saying. I'd like to see a change to the zoning, to the future land use map, to all of this, to meet this particular setup. It's the same thing that was done for anybody that lives here as far as the developments. At one point in time in the past, the future land use map showed this as something different than what probably went in.
Correct.
So uh. Maybe it's a loaded question. Because two of the three uses are designated as city uses. Would the city ever consider moving forward and saying, let's make a change to the future land use map uh unilaterally, or would we wait to see an applicant coming in? Uh making that request. Does that make sense? Would we try to to make the change, initiate the change, or are we gonna wait for somebody to come and initiate on our, on their behalf?
Well, we we did just adopt the general plan and this year and we didn't make a a change here, so. I have something to say we want ever in the future. Um. But but typically land use requests and changes to the general plan, those would come from an applicant who's seeking. To fully utilize their property or to to ask a question, how they would like to use use their property.
Okay, uh and then I'm gonna combine these two into one question because it's really the same thing. What I'd like to hear from staff is. This is too broad, but define the adverse effect of approving this. And the flip side to that is, w- we have a a recommendation from staff to deny this. What would the developer do coming forward in the future to reverse that decision from staff and have a positive recommendation? What's missing?
Yeah, so in the staff report, you you'll see under each of the applications types, there were a number of criteria for approval. If those were all addressed, I think that goes a long ways towards changing staff's recommendation. Some of the questions are are frankly a policy question, like. It's not against code to grade that hill out and make it flat. If that was improved rezon. So that that is possible if it's rezoned and staff. Thinks, well, maybe that's not most desirable under the general plan. So some of those are a difference of. There's multiple portions of our code and the general plan, which sometimes are in conflict with each other and that's because, you know. We're we're not living in a stasis. It's it's moving. Every property is unique. So. Some of those are policy questions of they wanna do it, makes sense for them. We think preserving. The hillside maybe makes more sense than houses in that location. Um. Does that answer your question?
It was perfect. Thank you. Other commissioners, questions for staff? Commissioner Thomas?
Just one in this. You may have already answered this a little bit. Under the uh PC or the master development plan. I I remember when that all was brought up against or to the city council and stuff. And my understanding was that the reason why we have the PC and the master development plan is you take this two hundred acre minimum. A large area and you're able to kinda tweak things a little bit to make it work it overall. And I think the reason why it was two hundred acres was because if you go too much smaller than that. You're gonna cram too much stuff into that area that just doesn't quite work. And if I remember right, that's kinda one of the reasonings. That that did take place. I remember seeing the city council and even here when we were discussing that. And so that's one of the things I wanted to bring up. Another thing is, is I served on the uh master or the. Um plan, yeah, and they put a lot of time and effort into it. And they went over it and over it and over it again. It is a living document. I have no doubt about that. But where it was just. Codified literally a couple of months ago. Um I would be very wary because that was with a bunch of citizens from all over the city. Um that came together that actually. I I thought they did an awesome job on that. I mean, I'm not just saying that because I sat through a lot of those things, but they did put a lot of their own time and effort into that. And I don't wanna have this. Commission um discount that at all. That that was something that I I personally think was a very positive thing and so anyway.
Any other commissioners for staff? We will uh bring the applicant back up, please. Uh. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh Commissioner, did you have a comment for staff? Uh go ahead.
Yes, okay. Um when I was reviewing this before the meeting tonight. I was really surprised to see that our staff had, uh you know, a nega- such a negative um. Response to this uh for these uh amendments and rezon and and such. So I, but I really looked through it. You know, as best as I could. And I'm just really concerned with the staff having so much, you know, uh the, you know, re- recommendation to. To deny that we would approve the changes that they want us to make. That's my comment.
Thanks. Please, uh one, three, four, however many of you would like to come up. There's gonna be a a variety of technical questions and some other things. Let's turn the time over you first for rebuttal.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I'm gonna put a couple of people on the spot here from our team. Caitlin, I'll probably give the chance to go first and rebut, maybe some of the, and look, this is a a good discussion. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I wanna echo what. Both Caitlin and Jeff said and I've been through plenty of public hearings and they they typically go like this, right? I mean, it's the nature of the beast and your comments and opinions are valid. Our rights as a property owner and developer are also part of the mix. I appreciate that being acknowledged acknowledged. So Caitlin, I'm sure will be able to at least clarify or give some defense of some of the open space. I know that's near and dear to your heart, Caitlin. Because a little bit of it was, I think there were some trash comments about weeds and this, that or the other, so. I'm gonna let Caitlin speak on a couple of those points. I'll probably let Thomas Romney come up and. Very briefly, Thomas, just talk about these seventeen or so points that the staff has brought up and that we think they're all pretty re- easily resolved. And and then Jeff. You know, I I know you've been looking at the general plan. I think you can look at the general plan in a lot of different ways. It was cited by. Numerous residents tonight. I think there's portions of it that you can also interpret that we are hitting. And so I'm gonna put you on the spot with that. And uh. And, you know, maybe dovetailing with that is. The whole low density comment. I mean, if you're gonna go with the city's general plan, you've gotta go with their definition of low density, which this is, so. Uh those are some of the rebuttals that I would start it out with, but I'll let Caitlin go first and uh and then the next two and I'll try to be concise in my comments at the end. Thank you.
I'm not known for being concise, so I'll try. So just to answer some of the questions as far as the the open space, um I don't know if you guys have made your way down into the Highlands. Master Plan Community or into Stone Creek, but their open spaces are very similar to what we're proposing here. And they are heavily used. They're constantly used by school kids, by moms walking in their strollers, by bikes. Me and my family use them all the time and they are heavily used. They are not trash collectors. I mean, I'm sure the occasional. Trash blows in, but our day of service is to clean up our trail system, so um we use that efficiently. And I don't see it as a weed patch. Um it's, I think it's a beautiful open space where we've seen antelope coming down. Into our backyards and feeding and um it's pretty neat to have a little piece of nature in the backyard. So that's my two cents on the the weed patch. Um as far as the the parking, um in our development plan, we have our single family. Estate and cottage lots. Um the homes are, the garages are gonna be set back five feet behind the. The residence or the porch, so each of those driveways is gonna be twenty five feet in length. Um all of them are required to have two car garages. Every single unit on here, townhomes included, have two car garages. Um the driveways to the townhomes are twenty two feet, so they can fit four cars in each townhome. And an F one fifty. Twenty two feet is important. Um the three foot setback, that's not, we're not trying to get a three foot setback for the unit. That three foot setback was really considered for the apron of the helms if they're an alley loaded product. So you're not gonna be parking a car behind the garage on an alley loaded product. And their parking would be. Either on the side lot, depending on how they lay out, or in a separate um parking lot. Ne- next to the units as a whole. So our setbacks, um. They're just based on how we lay things out and we don't feel that they're varying too much. We're not trying to ti- make tiny lots. We're trying to give each. You know, the yard that it can have. And if this is an item that we need to discuss further with staff, we're willing to. To make this a condition of approval if you don't feel like a three foot apron is appropriate. So these are things that that we would like to. Continue to discuss and refine if that's needed. But yeah, all of all of the units will have. A two car garage. And like somebody said, nobody parks their car in their garage. Well. We can't really enforce that, but um we're pri- providing at least two car garages for each unit. That means four parking spots if they have a driveway. And in the carriage lots, we're providing an extra on off-street parking spot, so that's three parking spots per carriage unit. So that exceeds code as far as single family goes. And I'll I'll turn the time over to Thomas.
Thanks so much. I'm Tom Romney with Focus Engineering. So we've been working with staff for quite some time on this project. Um I guess I would, can we go back to the land use map? And maybe Berth. Uh you know, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that, you know, we're really here for kind of two decisions and one is a land use change, which is the low density. Um we worked on Jones Ranch and so, yeah, there is some very low density on Jones Ranch, but the majority of the abutting property with Jones Ranch. Is actually um not, it's zoned variable up to ten units to the acre. And then obviously to the north, that's a PC zone as well. And so when you isolate just that area, it is a very low density, so it makes sense. Um versus us putting very low density against the hillside, our plan was to put open space against the hillside. So it's not, you know, it's just a different approach from what they did at Jones Ranch and then we are looking at putting. You know, the larger lots up against the hillside. I think another thing, so anyway, so when it comes to like that land use decision. Like to us, low, low density makes a lot of sense. Height point wasn't necessarily developed. As medium density, but on your land use map, it is medium density, so it just feels like low density is definitely the right. Mix for this piece. So I guess when I heard all the comments, the question is more, should this be a PC or not? Right? And I'm not, you know, maybe I could give you the reasons why I think it's a great opportunity for PC. Being connected to Jones Ranch, being connected to Sycamores. Um. You know, there's pros and cons, right? And for me, the pros is the based off of the um general plan of the city is. You know, you're getting a variety of housing types. It's hard because I get it. When you live in a neighborhood, you wanna protect that neighborhood. And I live in a neighborhood that's the same way. You wanna protect it, but apartments come in and different things come. And I live in a neighborhood that's the same way. You want to protect it, but apartments come in and different things come in. And I've just learned that there's good and bad to to all things, right? And. So like, as a, as someone who helps developers, I understand that concern. But at the same time, like. You know, providing opportunity for a variety of people to live in a variety of locations, I think is important for the future growth of all of Utah. And just doing that mindfully and, you know, a lot is in the eye of the beholder. One thing about this plan. This plan was a plan that was put together to try to illustrate the type of PC. The amount of open space. This shows thirty-two percent open space. The PC code requires at least twenty percent, so no matter what, we'll be held into twenty. We're we're, we have to do twenty percent. Um, you know, there's opportunities to do larger lots here. There's opportunities to move things around. With this approval. This plan does not get approved. This is an illustration. And so we would be going and we would like to move forward because it's hard to solve problems at this point. When you have no land use and you don't have a PC zone. It's hard to work with staff to give them all the details. So the master development plan maybe doesn't show how storm drains working, but it commits to a lot of things. It commits to how storm drainage will be, will follow the code. It commits to um above and beyond what the normal expectation is for geotechnical reporting. It's not, you know, Woods Ranch is a really big piece, so we're not. But we're in essence committing to what Ri- Woods Ranch is committing to when it comes to geotechnical, because we recognize like you can't just go move dirt and then think that we're all good. And from an engineering standpoint, from a developer standpoint, from a city standpoint, from a homeowner standpoint, nobody wants. Anything to move. Right? Like, that's the worst day of my job is if I hear that one of our subdivisions is moving. Like, that's the potential of me. Like not having a job in our business, not being in business. And so. That's never taken lightly. And in that ma- master development plan, it's a lot to go through. But um we're considering, though, we're trying to say like, what's the right, what's the right use? Should this be PC? But then also. You know, recognizing, yeah, we're still gonna work with staff. We're gonna tweak this plan. There's been talk about how do we get this graded right? Do we move dirt? There's no commitment in this plan. To moving that material. How we mitigate the gravel pit. There's a lot of options. There's different ways to do it. We know the parks that we need to put in. We know the amenities that need to go in. We know the trails that need to go in. And then we're just making sure that we cap, that we don't, that we stay within low density. And then we're asking for different product types. Um, Caitlin talked a little bit about the setbacks. We're not proposing. You know, it's tricky, because we want to, and this is what happened in Jones Ranch. You want to provide, we don't know exactly the architecture that, you know. For the first few phases that would come in the next three years. We have a pretty good idea of what that's gonna be. But you don't always know what's gonna be around architecturally. And how do you create variation in the development? Nothing shown on this plan has a three-foot setback to a rear yard. We recognize the reason we really like this. Um, cluster product is it provides for a smaller. Lot and actually a more usable backyard and that space. And yes, is it a? Half acre, third acre lot? It's not, but we're not targeting. The people who who live in that lot, and there's a lot of people now who aren't looking for that experience. But I understand that there are, and there's things from all of the public comment that we can. We can work with. So I just, I guess this is not the plan. This is an example of of the types of products that we think fit really well for this property. And will be very much in line with. You know, what can happen on Jones Ranch to the south. Um, as far as the seventeen comments, like that would be our, that was our hope, is that we'd get a positive recommendation from staff. Based off of the low-density land use, based off of doing a PC zone for what they explained. And that a lot of those details in these seventeen, we understand we have to work with staff. There is a lot of things to do from a utility standpoint that we recognize. We've already spent. A year and other consultants putting together intense reports to explain how the water and sewer can be taken care of. And then from here, moving forward, we know that all, that that is partly a council decision, how that gets resolved. But we understand there's a lot of work ahead with the city. Development does help promote progress and help solve problems, and so we want to be a part of solving some of the city's problems, and this development can help do that. And so we're comfortable with those seventeen comments. I guess. The only thing that kind of jumped out at me is when it came to utility and servicing these lots. We understand, and this is typical for all subdivisions in West Jordan. If you do a private street, you can't have a public utility, which is what. I feel like was being referred to, but you can put in a private utility, which is what we're planning on, and that's utility that's owned and maintained by the HOA. All of these cluster lots have individual laterals. They don't have main lines. You would have to in a single-family home. So I guess with that, we're happy to answer any questions, but. That's.
I mean, Jeff, I'm gonna. Give you a chance to not. And steal your thunder, uh, being mindful of time. Uh, you've heard from a lot from us, and we've heard a lot from the residents, and appreciate the forum that we've been given tonight. If I were to sum this up, and again, knowing that you may still have some questions for us, which we're here to answer, um. As a developer, you take plenty of arrows, and we have spent a a lot of time and effort, and we stand behind this plan. We believe it is a a solid plan. We believe there are things that can be worked through with staff and with concerns with the neighbors. I don't know that we're ever gonna see eye to eye on density. I've been in enough of these public hearings. Density is a hiss and a byword. I did hear on the record tonight, one of these gentlemen. I'm not against density, and I hope his neighbors don't, you know, don't get mad at him, because there's, there's a mentality. There's a mentality, unfortunately. You've been enough of these. There's a mentality. It's us against them. It's evil developer. We hate density. I would ask the gentleman who has three kids living in the basement, where are your kids gonna live? That's being missed tonight. These peop- These, these communities. Twenty years ago, when Sycamores was developed, this wasn't a problem. We are in a housing crisis in the state. I'm a biased developer. These are biased residents. Go talk to the governor of the state. Go talk to the Kim Gardner Policy Institute. We are in a housing crisis. We need more housing faster. That we are two years into this project. We'll go back to the drawing board if this doesn't get approved. We'll figure something out. Maybe we'll end up with these lower densities. But affordability, that's a, maybe that's a bad word. Our kids and grandkids need somewhere to live. I guarantee you, a number of people have lived in a townhome or apartment in this room. Does that make them a bad person? Does that hurt property values? I would absolutely defend the fact that it will not. That over time, it's exactly what you need. You have someone who stood up tonight, defended living in a community. With homes at different stages of life. It's a need. It's a necessity. I get it. This is very much the mentality. This, we don't want this in your own neighborhood. But it's it's overblown and it's uh. It's needed, this type of housing. This is not twenty years ago when there were third acre lots up and down the Wasatch Front. We're in a different time. That's my impassioned speech at the end. We're here to answer questions. We'd love for you to move this forward one way or another tonight. So thank you.
Open this up to questions? Boy, don't all jump at once. All right, I'll ask my questions. How do I ask my questions? First off, I mean, uh, thank you. Uh, you you obviously believe very, very strongly in this model, spend a lot of time on it, a lot of iterations, a lot of time with staff. What uh, I really, what keeps you going with this kind of a thing? Uh, it's gotta be that belief and that passion. So I'm I'm glad for that. I agree that it's uh important. Uh, for housing at this point in time, especially for. This type of community where you've got multiple stages of life. I I'm. I'm not a condominium guy. I'm not a high-density guy. I don't really care for, but. This is the type of community you want, where you've got the the all of that kind of almost sheltered in the middle of. This, you know, so you're not negatively impacting the surrounding community. Any case, so yeah, thank you for putting forth the effort uh of of putting this together. We do need to be careful with growth. We do need to make sure it's methodical. I'm glad that we're going through the process. Staff brought up, so uh. This is my only question. Staff brought up their seventeen points. I heard today that the seventeen points are very easy. Easily resolved, as I think the word that was used. What caused you to bring the application forward right now and not in a few months after those seventeen points are resolved?
I I would probably go back to the the time period it's taken to get to this point, where you kind of just becomes an iteration where just you keep. Going and going, and it's not resolved. This is a rezone at the end of the day. A lot of these things will be worked through, uh, whether it's this plan or not. I I realize it may not get approved. I'm completely cognizant of that. But we probably disagree with staff in that. It's just red line after red line, and we've tried to address it, and we feel like we've done a good job of it. We need to be heard. We've we've met with the council. We've met with the neighbors. We've been before design review committee and and planning commission. I'll come back to my comment before. We need housing. We need it more quickly. The legislature is moving this way as we speak. It shouldn't take two. We want to be thoughtful about. Community building and neighborhood building. It shouldn't take two years. And again, I, that's not completely fair to staff. That's, I'm referring back to when we started. Uh, interfacing with the landowner, but it's been a good year and a half to get to this point for a rezone. And the amount of time and money to put this together, just to get a decision. Uh, again, I'm I'm making a bit of a critique of the process. But that's why. Short answer, that's a long answer for a short question.
I I appreciate it. So I I guess to that end, another question that that plays onto that is. Uh, I think a portion, what I'm hearing from staff is a portion of that time, the reason why it's taking so long, is the the push for the PC zone. I I I I believe personally that the PC zone is probably appropriate for this parcel for a number of reasons. That said. Why go for a PC zone and not? Something that'd be more easily obtainable for you?
The PC zone allows for the different housing types. There's not too many other zones in the city that allow that. And it comes back to affordability. Uh, there's, there's always the comments of the, that the, the op- the public open houses about this, about the developer putting money in its pocket. Developer needs to make money. I'm speaking about myself in third person, and I'm the greedy developer in this scenario, right? Any developer who comes back to you needs to make money, and there's the price of land, which has gone up. And that, I don't see that going down anytime soon. So. Whether it's us and we go through with this contract or not, or some other developer that comes along. Maybe they're gonna propose higher density. I'm not saying that in a threatening way. I'm just saying, this is the reality of, you know, what what was Olympia Hills down in the uh. Not Riverton, but Harriman. We decided to take. A modest and say, hey, this is a reasonable approach. The neighbors don't paint it that way, but this is not high-density. This is not high-density. I understand that it's upsetting, and it's, hey, this is gonna change where I live. I understand that. What's sometimes forgotten in this is the right of the property owner. They're not here tonight. They're a family we bought land from before. They've owned this longer than anybody else has lived out here, and they have a right. Through us in this case, to come forward and say, this is what we think is best. They endorse our plan. They've signed the affidavit. No one hears from them. They don't want to come to the public hearing. You think they want to? Have twenty people stand up and, you know, and I get it. I I would be out here too. If I didn't like what was going next door. So I see both sides of it. So anyway, I don't mean to. Wax philosophical here, but that's an answer to your question.
Appreciate it. Uh, Commissioner Richardson.
Yes, so um to confirm then, you don't own the property yet?
We have the property under contract. We have closed on a portion of it. The uh northeast corner. Ten acre, ten or so acres, and we have a very flexible contract with the landowner that allows us to go through these types of zoning. Processes and and iterations and work with the, with the staff and with the council and planning commission and neighbors. So we, we have the land under contract and we own a portion of it.
So if the zone, the zone change to PC doesn't go through, you probably will not go through with buying the land?
Yeah, I don't know that it's black and white as that. It's it's go back to the drawing board, I think.
Okay, thank you.
And yeah, again, not sure what that looks like, and then maybe there's other zoning vehicles to pursue in the city, maybe the PC. But maybe we come back with a different plan. I mean, it it's just a, we haven't got that far yet.
Actually, I have another question, um. I really appreciate. All your. Time and money and efforts into what you're doing. And your presentation and meetings and and this tonight. Um, and your development all through West Jordan. Um, that's great. Uh, as far as uh affordable housing is concerned, um, I know we need more housing. But uh. I'm not inclined to um. Think that. Townhomes, you know, they're still unaffordable. A lot of the times, and um we don't have very much very low-density housing. In West Jordan. Uh, being planned. And uh so how much load, very low-density housing develop- developments are you kind of proposing in in West Jordan, or or are you proposing any?
I would answer that question that we typically look at a piece of land and we think what's the highest and best use for that land. We've done very low-density development. We've done a. Project over off Sixty-seventh West and Seventy-Eight South with Symphony Homes. The homes in there are a million dollars and more, and that's.
How long ago was that?
Just, no, it's go- it's ongoing right now.
Oh, it's ongoing right now?
So we, we were the landowner. We put together the development plan, and we're partners with Symphony Homes on that. So that's a great question you're asking. We're not just quote-unquote a high-density developer, because again, this is low-density. But it depends on the piece of ground. It depends at the moment in time. It depends on a number of factors. We've done commercial development. We've done fifty-five and older communities. We've done very small, uh, we've done thousands of single-family lots in your city, ten thousand square feet and higher. We're responding to what's going on right now in the market that if you talk to the experts, that trend's not gonna change. We're not gonna start seeing three-quarter acre lots in the next thirty years.
Well, I'm not so sure that I trust experts a lot of the times.
Mister Chair, I would recommend that you complete the questions that are specific to this application, then I move on to your discussion as a planning commission.
You, sir. Uh, anything, any other questions, excuse me, for the applicant?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Uh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, maybe before we jump into the motion, is it any questions, comments? Discussion? We have another planning commission, so.
Mister Chair. Mister Chair, perhaps? This might be helpful to the the commission. I I appreciate the uh the work that Taylor and other staff has put into this report. And there's certainly a lot to consider tonight. One thing that might be helpful to the planning commission is to remind you of the process. Meaning whenever a a uh general plan amendment or rezone is brought forth. We, you are are bound by the criteria of the code. That the council has adopted. And uh for those reasons, we we have our recommendation as presented to you. One other uh important element to remember as you contemplate motions and so forth. Is that um. Because this is a request for a planned community zone. A master development agreement, master development plan is is to go hand in glove with it. It's important also to note that a master development agreement and plan with sufficient detail. Has to be adopted before. Any zoning or general plan amendment. Meaning. To Taylor's point, there are policy uh questions woven through this request, right? The seventeen conditions that that you were talking about, Chair. Go a long way into providing clarity into that master development plan. That that the council will ultimately have to to consider. So just remember that that this, there's a sequence to this request. And and so. Um, as I've reviewed this um request, especially in regards to. Impacts to the surrounding neighborhood, there, there's just not sufficient detail from our perspective to answer all of those. Criteria listed in the code.
Thank you. I, this summarizes what I was going to to suggest uh here specifically. I think the the benefits that I'm seeing is we've got a willing partner. And I mean, as I look at it, I think it's a good design. I think uh, I think it does promote quality of life. I understand some of the concerns and and worries and frustrations uh about. The the what-ifs. We're we're bound by code. We don't look at the what-ifs, right? Uh, that said, the reason I'm leaning toward probably what Commissioner Wen is about to. To uh recommend is we do need to have that master development agreement. Signed, sealed, and delivered before we do the general plan update and the rezone. So, sorry, stealing your thunder, Commissioner Wen. Go ahead.
No thunder at all. I move that the planning commission make a recommendation of denial to the city council for the pro- proposed general plan amendment. As the proposal fails to proper satisfy criteria A, B, C, and E thirteen dash seven C dash six.
Commissioner Thomas?
I will second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion, Commissioner Wen, a second for Commissioner Thomas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion curies unanimously. Commissioner Wen, you want to keep going?
I move that the planning commission make a recommendation of denials to the city council for the master development plan. Agreement plan as it is anticipated to have a negative impact. On surrounding development, fails to comply with adopted ordinances. Is not refined for adoption and just doesn't provide sufficient detail or clarity on how and when utility deficiencies will be mitigated.
Commissioner Thomas?
I will second that motion.
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion Commissioner Wen, second Commissioner Thomas, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I further, further move that the planning commission recommend denial of the rezone of seventy six point two one acres from, from very low density, single family residential public facilities and low density, single family to planning community, to plan community as the planning commission is unable to identify affirmative determinations for approval of criteria one, two, and four.
Commissioner Thomas?
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion Commissioner Wen, second Commissioner Thomas, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, so this will go, do we have an idea on the date?
December twentieth.
Wow, so fast. All right, December twentieth, city council meeting, here. Bring your own chair, BYOC. Uh, would somebody like to motion that we take a, a brief recess or are we okay?
I'll make a motion that we take a five minute recess.
Okay, we are going to recess for five minutes. Be back at let's go nine oh five. To order the West Jordan Planning Commission meeting for December fifth. Uh, two agenda items left on the meeting, both public hearings with planning recom, uh, commission recommendation to the city council. Uh, we'll start with agenda item number six, a text amendment for water efficient standards. Uh, is to amend the two thousand nine Western Municipal Code, section thirteen thirteen five for water efficiency standards to comply with Utah Admin Rule uh, six fifty three eleven and Jordan Valley Water Efficiency Standards, the citywide applicability. The city is the applicant and we will invite Alan, I'm speaking slowly so he can make it to the mic.
Thanks, I'm trying to coordinate a lot of stuff for the twentieth and, and this, so thank you, sir. Thank you. Sorry, everybody left and they don't get to hear me talk about water. But I'm grateful that the, the residents came out and their voices are heard and the council of the, I'm sure will be excited to hear from them in a couple of weeks. So as I mentioned during the pre-meeting, we have a, in thirteen thirteen five, we have water efficiency standards, you last heard those in twenty twenty one. Council adopted it later in twenty twenty one. There was an audit, the, the state division of water resources have audited different cities code to make sure that they're in compliance. There's a, a state administrative rule. It's R six five three dash eleven, and then the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District has some standards. If you remember twenty twenty one, we were kind of in this drought type of thing and there was a lot of, of cutback. So the idea is that we try and conserve water. While we're the second driest state in the union, we actually are pretty high consumers of water with, with our lawns and such. So with the audit, there were two findings that we have to make to our code in thirteen thirteen five. The first one is that multifamily multifamily developments need to follow the same as commercial and industrial uses. So very limited lawn space except for their designated recreation areas like swing sets and, and those type of things. The other one that we need to add to this code in thirteen thirteen five is the greater of two. So depending on your total landscape area, front and side yard, we're not talking backyards, just the, the two sides and the front yard. You can either have the greater of two hundred and fifty square feet of turf or thirty five percent of the total landscape area, which is front and side yard. So just to give you an example, if my total landscape area, front and side yard is a thousand square feet, then I can have three hundred and fifty square feet of grass. If it's twenty five hundred square feet, the greater would be eight hundred and seventy five square feet of grass. So basically about thirty five percent of your front and side yard can be turf and then you'd need to like local scape or come up with a, a different landscape option than turf. Um, at some of the meetings that I've been to, the, the, the discussion of misplaced grass is if the only time you walk on it is when you mow it, you probably have grass in the wrong spot. It's okay to have grass, swing sets, slides and those kinds of things, but like I said, if if the only time you walk on a section of lawn is when you mow it, you probably have it in the wrong spot. Put in some pavers or something. So anyway, that's all the changes are. I know that you were emailed a revision two. Um, that's the one that we're talking about specifically. I have talked to Mr. Alan Packard, who's the executive director of Jordan Valley Water. And on the surface, he says it seems that this would meet the requirements of state rule and the Jordan Valley standards. Uh, just as a point of information for you, Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District provides about ninety percent of the city's water supply. So we, we want to do that. The benefits of making these changes, number one is that the city can continue to negotiate good water rates with our provider of water. And number two, uh, the state of Utah funds rebates and incentives for residents who want to be water wise and, you know, flip your strip program and water efficient toilets and those kinds of things. So by doing this, we will be eligible, the residents would be eligible to apply for those, uh, those grants and incentives. Without this, um, our residents in West Jordan would not be able to apply for those, they would be denied. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for staff? Looks good.
All right, thank you very much for letting me be here tonight.
All right, well, it's a public hearing, so we'll open this agenda item up to the public. If you're here to speak on item number six, the text amendment for water efficient standards and you are online, please raise your hand. If you're here in person, feel free to come up, state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes to address the commission. And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for this agenda item, bring it back to the commission for further discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chair, if I could just make a quick comment. The, just to follow up on what Mr. Anderson mentioned. The, there is no substantive difference between the original option or draft of the text amendment that was in your packet or that was online versus the other one that you subsequently received. They're both substantively the same, it's just rewording the language so it's easier. The, the way I would phrase it is it's easier for staff to implement. They don't have to go back and forth between other standards and our own, they're all internal. Um, so just in case, just as a part of, uh, point of clarification, it was just to make it easier, especially for staff and the public frankly, to understand all within the code without having to look somewhere else.
Thank you. Uh, which one of you is first? Commissioner Thomas?
All right, I'll make that motion. Nobody objects?
I do object.
Oh, sorry.
I don't know if it's appropriate to bring this up now or later, but I'll, it seems to me like it might be better now. Just a, just a typo, I think. On the, the document I'm looking at is on the second page, item A one C. It looks like the word B has been left out of that sentence. Terms in this section shall be defined pursuant to section thirteen point two point three.
I think you're right, I think that is a typo.
Thank you.
Okay, with the correction that Commissioner Wen did figure it out that we were doing, and it's the second section that we got, just to make sure that's clarified that it's not the first, it's the second. I just make a motion that we send a positive recommendation to the city council.
Commissioner Shelton?
I'll second that motion.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Thomas, a second from Commissioner Shelton, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. On to the last item of the evening, item number seven, text amendment for home occupation standards, amend the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code, section thirteen eleven two G. Home occupation standards, use outside residence. Citywide applicability, uh, city of West Jordan applicant with Mr. Gardner representing the district, Larry, take it away.
This is going to be rapid fire, so home occupation standards have been in place for twenty two years. Uh, this will change. This change, well, currently they allow home occupations are only allowed inside the primary resident. This will, um, and as you can see in the, in letter C, it says a home occupation should be subordinate use, which is secondary and incidental, the primary use of the property as a dwelling instead of a dwelling. And then said, where allowed on the property, a home occupation shall be allowed on the property as follows. Subject to section H, and I'll go over that in a second, within the interior of the primary residence, which is, nothing's changed, inside a garage, but only if the required off-street parking is not eliminated or in an accessory dwelling or other accessory structure on the property. And so the reason the accessory dwelling is, is we, the last two or three years now is there's been more and more properties that have accessory dwelling units. That is another change that was not even probably in the same universe in, in two thousand and two. So that we have to address that. So if someone uh, renting an accessory dwelling, you can have a home occupation. And, and so the main thing, and I think Commissioner Thomas brought this up in the pre-meeting, is the use outside the residence. So the home occupation activity outside the primary resident shall not adversely impact the residential character of the neighborhood. So the permitted area is of course within the interior of the primary resident and is limited up to a maximum of five hundred square feet. Home occupation is in a garage, accessory dwelling or other accessory structure shall be limited to five hundred square feet area maximum. And so it's not saying that you can have five hundred square feet in your house, five hundred square feet in a garage and then five hundred square feet in an accessory dwelling, you only get five hundred square feet. And as Commissioner Richardson, how is that inspected? We have building inspectors and one of the fire marshals, I think Mike Jensen goes out and inspects all of these home occupations to make sure they're in palos all the time. And so make sure that they're with compliant with the code. And then of course, um, we have hundreds of definitions and why not? We need to change the definition of what a home occupation is. And it used to say if, well, the what it says now, I should say, is entirely within a dwelling. And it would be changed, the proposal would change it on a residential property. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for staff? I, I have two and they're both very, very quick. Uh, go back to the first page of the, that one. Uh, the accessory dwelling or other accessory structure on the property is by saying that, does that just, is it implied that has to be a legal accessory dwelling unit?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so we don't need to add that. Uh, next page? On uh, for G, shall not adversely impact the residential character of the neighborhood, I agree. Is it? Uh, is this too broad in that we can have difficulty, uh, justifying is not the right word. Could we get in a fight with someone over residential character? Do we need to be more specific?
I think when I look at the residential character, I think people live there, people raise their kids there, all the stuff we heard tonight for in two hours. You know, um, I think a commercial character is different than residential character. I don't know, I can go back and refine that if you would like. This is not burning to go to the city council, it won't go in this year. But, um, I, I think that's perfectly defensible. I'll look at our, we have two attorneys in the room that would argue that in front of a judge, so I think it's defensible, but I'd like to hear from them, so.
Yeah, if we, if perhaps as Mr. Langford here was just thinking that, you know, maybe we use a term that's defined, like residential use, I think is a defined term in our code. Might be one way we could handle it, so it's, it's not subjective, it's more objective, you know, does it mean that definition or not? Cause we all know what a residential use is. In fact, it's defined by the uses that are in the residential use tables. Right? And if somebody's trying to do something that's not even in the tables, that's clearly not a residential use by definition. So maybe that's a way to tighten that up so that there's no potential for So maybe that's a way to tighten that up so that there's, uh, no potential for, um, somebody not being able to figure out what it means, right?
I like that.
Then I'll make that change to the order notes.
Other thoughts? Commissioner Shelton?
Just on that same line of thought, so if you change the word, uh, residential character from character to use, that, that's a term that's defined within city code, is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yeah, I think it's, uh, in thirteen dash two dash three, we can check that real quick if we need to. Uh, but like, or if we need to, if it's not a defined term or if we need to make it more clear, we can do that. Or like I say, we can tie it to the use tables if we need and that definitely obviates any ambiguity at that point if we tie it directly to the tables.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Here's what I will say, is that in all the years I've been doing this, I've seen residential nature, residential character, never once has anyone brought it up. So, but it's good to vet these things. I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying that it is something that someone commonly argues, you know, but hey, there's a first time for everything.
Think of the perspective, if we just ended up with a particular resident who was maybe a little bit more litigious than others and he wanted a machine shop, we're like, you can't run a machine shop out from behind your house because it's noisy.
He's pointing at you.
You know, I, I could see that adversely impacting the residential use, especially if it's forty hours a week or, or more. So, okay, that makes sense. Any other questions? I, I get it. It's like a, a pretty broad explanation, so. Uh, this is a public hearing. We'll open up to the public for questions as previously discussed. If you're online, feel free to raise your hand. All right, we will ask, uh, Mr. Green to go ahead and unmute himself and he may address the planning commission.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Cool. Thanks for, uh, staying up late. It's normal for the council to stay up late, not for you guys. Um, my question would be what, with the discussion you just had, if you limit it to the residential uses in the residential table defeats the purpose of why we're even looking at this ordinance change. Um, one of the reasons why we were looking at this ordinance change was, uh, uh, an individual build a accessory building and wants to run a nail salon in their back, backyard. It's a small building, but that's not in the residential table. And so if that's not then, so now then we would have to do is go through and modify the residential table. I would tell you to leave the description alone and leave it nebulous like Larry had it. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We'll bring this back to the commission for, oh, I'm sorry, I've got to close the public hearing. Is there anybody else that would like to address the... All right, we will now close the public hearing and bring this back to the commission for further discussion or a motion. Uh, do we need to address what was just said? I think the way that it's written is we're trying to not adversely impact the residential use of the neighborhood. It's not, it's not the use is specific, specified to residential uses. So either way, use, character, I think we're perfectly fine.
Can we say use, character or use?
I think based on the conversation, uh, we can make the recommendation, uh, nebulous enough that these guys can tweak it how they'd like.
Okay, sure.
So I would, I would make the recommendation you want is modified by the planning commission because believe me, the city council will talk about it, so.
I'm fine either way. Would you like to take a stab at a...
Read the motion? Is that what you mean? Oh, make a stab at changing?
Uh, it's up to you. If you think it ought to be changed from character to use or you're okay with character or you'd like to character and use, uh, if you'd like to go ahead and do a motion based on what you're thinking, we can move forward.
Yeah, so you could use the recommended motion, then add in the change that you want, for instance.
Yeah, character and use, let's add that. Character and use. So, uh, I'll make the motion. Okay. Based on the information and findings of the criteria, required criteria set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council with, should I say, with the, uh, change to character and use. Or use, I mean, I'm sorry, character or use, um, to the city council for this application finding that an affirmative determination has been made for the criteria found in thirteen dash seventy dash six B, one through four.
Commissioner Shelton?
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Richardson, a second by Commissioner Shelton, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Wen beat you.
I move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.
All ready?